My name is Bernard Newman. I'm a junior candidate for the council of Sligo. I'm a councillor for the County Council. 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 My name is Bernard Newman.
Morning to everyone, good morning to the members, to the members of staff, those coming in virtually. It's great to see the numbers back in the chamber again. So without further ado, we'll get on with the with the business of the meeting. And I'd like to welcome our members of Corla and Oog. We have Roisin Eglington, Saoirse Jago, May Wair and Anna Quinn online as well. And it's item eight on the agenda, but with the with the members' agreement, I'd like to take the the presentation first.
Agreed, agreed.
No problem.
So I don't know who's going to who's going to go first, but you're very welcome. And thank you for for attending this morning, and we look forward to the presentation.
Hello, thank you. My name is Roisin Eglington. So this is our presentation to the Sligo County Council on this day, 7th of February 2022. So as some of you might already know what Corla is, but just to refresh, Sligo Corla and Oog are child and youth councils all across the country, which aim to involve children in the development of local services and policies.
Hello.
Sligo Corla is made up of young people aged 12 to 18, who are elected as youth representatives to ensure young people's views and opinions are heard. We meet twice a month to discuss and work on issues of interest and concern to young people as voiced at the annual general meeting. As you can see here, the topics we discussed and our main topics for the year include mental health, climate action and community. Our aims for 2022 are to make forward moves in these areas for young people. Anna, May and Saoirse will be talking to you today about these three topics. And I've handed over to Saoirse now, who will be talking about mental health.
It's sorry, Saoirse, just before you start, could could anyone that's coming in virtually, could you just mute yourselves, please? All apart from Saoirse, thank you.
Thank you so much. Hello, everybody. My name is Saoirse Jago, and today I'm going to be talking to you about mental health services and support for young people in County Sligo. Next slide, please. Mental health support in schools. At the annual general meeting, schools were identified as the main point of contact for young people with mental health issues. However, the general consensus was that there were not a lot of opportunities to talk about mental health in a setting where young people young people felt comfortable. A common point raised by participants was that mental health was treated like a science subject on a curriculum where it needed to be checked off as a learning outcome. The easiest point of access regarding mental health information is through schools. Although it was pointed out that if a young person is not attending a school, for example, if they were home schooled, then where would they go for this vital information? Next slide, please. Some suggestions that were made. Many of the groups could not list any facilities where they could access mental health support besides school. They identified that the facilities or services that are already in place simply need greater publicity and promotion. Another great point made was that the Corla and Oog booklet launched at the AGM should be distributed to all leaving cycle students in County Sligo, as it lists many of the online services and resources available for youths on mental health. Thank you so much for your time, and I'll pass you on to May.
Thank you, Saoirse. The extremely pertinent topic of climate action was another area of discussion at our most recent AGM. As I'm sure the council is aware, with every initiative or project we undertake, Sligo Corla and Oog is always asking, what are the ecological implications? We were incredibly curious to see what the general consensus was amongst Sligo's youth. And from our discussions during the AGM, young people expressed that there is an overall apathy towards climate action because they have not seen the negative effects directly impacting them yet. They reported that despite the fact that climate change is considered the young people's fight, they feel powerless to effect change in any meaningful or dramatic way. We have recognized the responsibility is primarily in the hands of adults who are making the decisions, namely Sligo County Council. But we suggest that through collaboration between County Council and Sligo's youth, we could create initiatives that empower young people. And by allowing them the opportunity to see the climate action the council is undertaking, we can reassure the young people that great strides are being taken within Sligo. While the influence may reside with other decision makers, responsibility to act is felt by every young person. Next slide, please. To help further negate the sense of powerlessness, we are proposing educational and promotional campaigns. For educational, we should take an approach that is unique and adapted to Sligo, that addresses issues such as bonfires or the safest type of coal to use. For promotional, the wider the reach, the better. And young people have suggested utilizing and encouraging groups such as Sligo County Council to work directly with communities. Some brilliant ideas came up, such as housing estates having central compost areas or repurposing green areas in Sligo to plant mini orchards. Another issue that was repeatedly mentioned was waste in County Sligo. Responsible waste disposal is not prominent enough. Dumping on the roadside or fly tipping is an issue. And while fines are in place for littering, they are difficult to enforce. We need more bins in rural Ireland and more bins by the beaches. Readily available access to bins is vital if we are to combat littering in Sligo. And eventually, we can work our way up to having separated public bins, where we can have separate for recycling, general waste and compost. The final issue raised was the lack of access to public transport in Ireland, which resulting in excessive use of cars and gas consumption. This is a topic that Anna will elaborate on, but as I will say, that young people expressed a frustration that electric cars were financially out of reach to them. And they will be in favor of promoting and facilitating modes of public transport, such as bikes or scooters. Thank you for your consideration, and now I'm going to pass you on to Anna.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Anna Quinn, and today I will be presenting the topic community. Next slide, please. Next slide, please.
It's it's up there, Anna.
Oh, sorry, my laptop must be a little bit slow.
You're okay, you're all right. Take your time.
As you can see, there was a common thread across the groups who spoke about community. And here are some of the points. As we all know, we are all incredibly lucky that County Sligo has such beautiful countryside, landscapes, beaches and lots of arts and culture that people can get involved in. There are great shops, galleries, cinema and theatre. But what people said is that there would be great if there was more advertising towards young people before these events take place, just to encourage involvement, maybe in schools or in an online forum. A topic brought up by many people in the AGM where that small rural communities are disconnected from Sligo town. This links into the public transport issue and people feeling obliged to have lifts from their parents in and out of Sligo. And the recent local link improvement has seriously been helpful to young people in these rural areas, but I think that more routes from rural areas would be extremely beneficial. As we know, GAA is great in every community. But I think that it would be great to have some clubs for young people that who aren't interested in sport, example, drama or film or something like that. Next slide, please. These are just some of the suggestions made by the young people. This, I'll start off with, is one of the most important suggestions made that every person at the AGM meeting found important, is that there are not enough public spaces developed for young people to socialize in. No outdoor covered public areas, recreational clubs like a drop-in cafe. This would be extremely useful for the youth of Sligo, just somewhere safe to socialize in after school, and I think would be of use to everyone. And this ties in with the climate topic, is that there is too much food waste in Sligo, especially in schools. And a way to figure out an environmentally friendly and cost-effective way to reduce this would be great. And as some of you may know, Food Cloud, the business in Dublin, takes leftover food that's about to expire from businesses that don't need it and give it to small charities who do need it. And something like that in Sligo would be great. Again, with the food waste, more education about chewing gum disposal would help keep Sligo as lovely as it already is. Thank you for listening, and now I pass you on to Roisin.
Thank you again, Anna. So thank you all for taking your time to listen to us. We really hope you recognize how important these topics are to us and by extension, how important they are to the entire community of young people in Sligo. We'd like to thank Cahillak councillor Paul Taylor, all of the members of Sligo County Council and CE Martin Linden for inviting us to make this presentation today and for your time and attention. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. And first of all, I want to compliment you on on your presentation. Compliment you on your presentation. I think your your choice of headings was excellent. Every one of you were straight to the point. You didn't talk around the subject, you talked about the subject. And of course, we we more than value every young person's opinion. I think young people's opinion is vital, is vital for us all. But again, I have to say, you know, mental health, climate action, community, very, very important at the moment and will be in the for the future. But the presentation was excellent, and the way you dealt with it so swiftly, straight to the point with everything you said, I have to really, really, really compliment you on that. I see councillor Maguire, you have a hand up there.
Thank you, Cahillak, and thank you, ladies, for that presentation. As councillor Taylor has outlined, it was very snappy but to the point. And I I'd like to reassure you, if I can a little, that a lot of the topics that you've raised have been discussed and are discussed frequently in the chamber. The the issues that arose in relation to mental health, I think, are particularly interesting about awareness and availability for online or the lack of online services or other services other than school. You mentioned homeschooling, and obviously, there's a lot of kids who don't attend school or who may be dropped out of school early, but would also require the assistance of that. So I think that's something that definitely could be worked on. In relation to the climate action issues that you raised, I chair what's called the Strategic Policy Committee in Climate Change on the council. And I will check with our coordinator, but we can either invite you in to listen to a session or if we aren't by statute allowed to invite you in, we can certainly send you information in relation to the work that's ongoing in that committee. It is extensive. It's right across the council. We've actually recently set up a new climate action office, and we have three people working in that solely focused in the area of climate action. So it is something the council are are very active on and taking very seriously and are aware of their leading role in the county on it. I loved your ideas about alternative or socializing spaces for young people. And I think that also is coming to fruition. There is plans to develop a Stephen Street car park, and there will be a covered area there, which will be open to all. But the the idea of a young film club is something that I'll bring back to the model. I am on the board of the model, and they have an adult film club. So I'll bring it up with them to see whether or not they might be interested in setting up a youth film club also. So thanks again, Gords. It's great to see people who are interested in, I suppose, politics, community and activity at your age, and I hope you continue it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Maguire. Councillor Grayde.
I'd be brief, Cahillak. Just firstly, to thank you, members of the council of Dole, to for giving us a very good presentation here this morning. And we councillors could learn a lot from you. You were straight to the point and give a good, snappy, informative presentation. So I want to acknowledge that. And I think you included topics, especially the mental health issue, that can be very pertinent to young people, to all people, but certainly to young people. And in that field, I would say to you that the important thing, no matter what you're on, that you as young people include everybody and don't exclude. And I think if I give you no other message today coming away from here, sometimes at a young age, we can exclude people because they just mightn't be cool and and whatever. And I think it's important that you you and your and your peers include people and not exclude and respect everybody for what they are, what they are. So everybody has something to offer, so I think that's very important. But seeing and listening to the likes of you that have got involved, you obviously have an awareness of the importance of people and community. So I think it all augurs well for Sligo that we have fine young people prepared to put the work and time into the presentation that you've done this morning. And I want to compliment you, and I certainly look forward to seeing some of you, if not all of you, involved in politics at a later stage. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Grayde. Councillor Catherine.
Thank you, and thank you, ladies, for a fantastic presentation. I'm just wondering, first of all, if that presentation can be made available to us all so that we can look at it in more detail. That'd be great. It was very well researched, very well thought out. But again, as I said, you put straight to the main points, there was no waffle, and you delivered your points very well. I I think the most important point that I got from your presentation is collaboration. And it's great that you recognize that with collaboration. And we need to take this on board because it's a mutually beneficial project, I suppose, for the local authorities to collaborate with young people. Because here on the ground and you see exactly what's going on, you recognize the need. So and you mentioned empowering young people. So with that collaboration and communication, that empowers you. And then you're confident to tell us what we should be doing and what's needed. And as councillor Maguire said, there are an awful lot of projects ongoing at the minute in the local authority, but maybe it's time for us to raise awareness of those projects a little bit more so that you're aware and you can become more involved as well. Anna, you mentioned about the local link more routes. I noticed that with with my own children, the local links have been invaluable, particularly when you're living out in the country and you have to travel to get a bus to bring you into town. So you're looking for more of those. I am. We're working with with TII to work on more routes being made available. And then you're not enough recreation clubs and safe public spaces. Again, it's something that I suppose with with funding that's been hopefully pumped into rural, more rural communities and community centres, that that should be should be more of those public spaces, safe spaces available. But again, you know, for you to make sure that you let people who are, you know, running community centres and involved in different clubs to let and youth clubs, to let them be aware of that and give those suggestions as well. And just lastly as well, it's just great to hear women's voices here speaking about this. And there is a campaign now for more women for election by 2050, 50 by by 2030. And I can certainly see you all putting your names down there, you're well able. There's no doubt about it, and there's nothing that she cannot do here. So this is a great starting point for you. Well done. Thanks for taking the time to make the presentation, to present it to us. And I'm really looking forward to seeing you all in the future, making valuable contributions to society. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Walsh.
Yeah, thanks, Cahillak. I'd be brief. I just want to again echo what was said already. Want to thank Roisin, Saoirse, May and Anya for the presentation. I know Corla and Oog, we do a lot of work with them at work on a daily basis and Child and Family Agency, likewise for Oga, SIPC and all the subgroups and and all the feeding in to all the plans. Just on the Food Cloud, my understanding is that Sligo Family Resort Centre is after winning a contract for that, for Sligo Litterum. I understand it'll be up and running soon. And on the mental health piece, I understand that there'd be a new mental health service launched very, very shortly through the HSC in Sligo at community level that will be open for referrals for from the public and from GP. And again, I just want to thank you for all your feedback into the community voluntary sector, particularly the Sligo PPN and all the section 59 sector across the county. I know how much work you do in feeding into all the strategies and plans on an annual basis. So thank you for that.
Councillor Gilroy.
Thank you, and it's good to talk to you again. I had the pleasure of talking to you at your AGM back in November, which was very well run. And you were all excellent speakers that day as well, so I knew what to expect today. So firstly, again, to congratulate you on what's all this then? It's a fantastic publication. And I was just kind of looking through some of my notes from the time. And your even your logo, you really sum it up very, very well. Young voices, local issues. And really, that's that's exactly what we need to hear from you. Where we are your local council, we're here to listen to you. And you can guide us on some of the issues. We can't, we can't change anything in Ukraine, or we can't change anything that's going on in South America or wherever. But we can do things at local level. And sometimes we need you to be our eyes and ears on the ground. So keep us informed of what the things are and look forward to seeing you in here in person, meeting with us again. And again, thanks, thanks for having me at your AGM last year. Thank you.
Councillor Healy.
Yeah, I want to thank them for the presentation. The future does look bright after listening to them, ladies there, and discussing of the normal things that's happening in everyday life here, us as councillors. And as this says themselves, which mean they hit on transport, food, the environment, all things that are that needs to be addressed. As it says, even here, if you look in Sligo itself, we have no hazard waste facility, which is something that we need to be pushing for more. That way, that should mean that you wouldn't have all the dumping that's happening in the areas. The right in relation to what they're saying about bins and areas, because I mean, if you go to any of your schools, all the schools are taught with green flags on how to pick up rubbish, yet they've no place to put it. So there's a lot of good response back from you. And as it says, if any of them ever wish to come out and see what it's like in the life of a councillor, I'd like to offer that out to you, to come out and see exactly what a councillor does on his everyday duties, out meeting different people and that. So if any of you are interested in that, because as it says, you're the future. We hope to have some of you sitting in here in the coming years. So I mean, that's an offer there if any of you want to look at what it's like on the other side, being a councillor, putting through a motion, maybe put down a motion and and see how that goes through and write to the different ministers and that. So I leave that open to yourselves if that's any of you'd be interested in something like that. Thank you.
Okay, that's June. Yep, see now, I have a word.
And just to congratulate you on an excellent presentation. I thought the subject matters that you touched on were poignant and are very important to us all. And I was going to say as future ambassadors for the county, but you're ambassadors already for the county. And just to thank you for raising those issues and not forgetting that as well as all the issues that we do face, that you do have a great county to live in as well when you're balancing it up on your next presentations for people. But it was an excellent presentation, thank you very much.
Thank you, C. Would any of you like to come back, ladies, on any of the comments before we finish up? I'm not going to put you under any pressure, Anna. You have your hand up there.
Yeah, I'd just like to say thank you so much to all the councillors for your feedback. It's very reassuring to hear that, all the projects you're working on. And thank you very much for having us today.
Listen, thank you again, and again, keep up the good work. And as was said, we are available here to answer any questions that you may have. We're available to help as well in any way we can. The door is open, it actually is open again now, so don't be strangers. And again, thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Now, members, I propose we go back to the start of the agenda. There's another presentation at item nine, but we'll go back to the report, I'm sorry, at item nine. So item one on the agenda, to note the minutes of the meeting of the Ballymore Taborcarrighe Municipal District held on the 15th of November 2021. Noted. Councillor Mulvaney, two, to confirm the minutes of the ordinary meeting of Sligo County Council. Councillor Walsh proposed, councillor Mulvaney second. Three, to elect a chair to the Strategic Policy Committee on Environment and Infrastructure Policy, SBC2, following the resignation of councillor John Gilroy.
I propose councillor Joe Queenan.
Cahillak, I'll second that proposal.
Councillor Joe Queenan proposed and seconded, agreed? Agreed. Four, to approve pursuant to section 183 of the Local Government Act 2001, the disposal of the property of 36 Mariboy State Sligo to Rowan and MacAllister. Proposed councillor Grayde, second to councillor Boy. Five, to approve in accordance with section 183 of the Local Government Act 2001, the disposal of land at Mariboy Sligo, County Sligo, to Kingsbridge Private Hospital. Report previously proposed councillor Bree.
Hospital has agreed to pay the council a sum of 57,500 for the 0.387 acres of land in question. And I believe it's a reasonable price, and I have no doubt but that the additional 30,000 euro we're receiving will be put to good use by the Parks Department. I formally move the motion.
I've seconded that. Okay, seconded by councillor Healy. Okay. Six, to approve, proposed councillor Grayde, seconder councillor Walsh. Seven, to note the report on the Ethics Register under section 174 of the Local Government Act 2001. Noted. Now, nine, a report on the Sligo brand project. And I'd like to welcome Margaret and Gordon here to the chamber.
Good morning, members. And can I just say thanks to the Cahillak and the members for affording this opportunity just to briefly go through the project that we're working on in relation to the Sligo brand? Many of you will be familiar already with the Sligo brand project, but it's just that I suppose we're doing a little bit more work on it now in recent times, and we just wanted to make the members aware of it. So we'll go through a few slides quickly with your permission. So so I suppose, members, you'll be aware of the brand. Does this work, Jimmy? Yeah, great, yeah. The brand is sligo dot. And the brand with the taglines is Sligo Live, Invest, Visit. Now, I suppose a lot of work had gone in at the time when we were working on on initially designing this brand to ensure that the taglines were appropriate to the needs of the council at the time and the needs of the county to develop our economic and social and cultural assets going forward. Sligo.ie is the website address, and that's our call to action that we would use when we are directing in a publicity way towards the the actual website itself. So members, the launch took place in October 2019, and we had a good launch in in the model. It was very much focused on Sligo. We had Sligo speakers, Sligo food, Sligo music. It was very much a promotion and the celebration of all things, all our strengths in Sligo across our Live, Invest, Visit pillars. And the purpose of the brand was to create one visual identity. I suppose that all stakeholders in the county could identify with and represent with. Ultimately, I suppose, to to ensure that there is strong promotion and a strong message regionally and nationally and internationally for Sligo. Very briefly, the story behind the brand, just by a little recap. There was a lot of thought went in and consultation, and members would have been involved in that here. The Sligo Economic Forum were very instrumental as well in terms of progressing with this concept. So the it was, it was a big play on the Owen Sligo to represent optimism, opportunity openness. So we took that piece of the Sligo word to make sure that the the design was simple, direct, but effective. The circle represents that central point, the coming together of stakeholders, citizens, community, visitors, potential investors, et cetera. It's graphically layered as well, and that is to reflect the significant relationship with the shell and our Sligo folklore that we're also familiar with here in Sligo. The colours, again, were significant, so the green represents the community, the landscape, the growth. The blues represent the business side, you know, working industry, the reds. The red in particular and the dark reds were to pick up on the existing Sligo crest, but we were also tying in there with the Sligo Set Your Spirit Free Tourism logo, which was already in place. So it was to be consistent with what was already there in Sligo and to link and keep that in place. I suppose what we want to just maybe mention today, members, is that we are in a refreshed situation with the brand. We've all come through a couple of difficult years with with COVID. And I suppose we wanted to be sensitive about how the brand was portrayed, where a lot of people couldn't visit, and a lot of people, you know, were affected with employment and so on. So it was important that, while we did keep a level of activity going with the brand, that we were sensitive to people's needs, that there were more, I suppose, pressing priorities, some of that we've heard about there from young people earlier. So but nevertheless, we are now at a positive and an optimistic stage. We are working through our Sligo 2030 process, the early stages on that. We are working through our Sligo 2030 process, the early stages on that. We have been out doing quite a lot of consultation. There is a new vision emerging for Sligo as part of that process. And also, we have been developing further the tagline. So now we want to say that Sligo is live green, supporting Sligo as a socially inclusive and sustainable place that cherishes its vibrant communities. We want to focus on smart, supporting Sligo as a regional growth centre and a champion of innovation and smart development. And sustainability is very important as well going forward with our increasing agenda on climate change. So we want to promote Sligo as a sustainable tourism destination with rich cultural heritage and set in a unique natural environment. So just some of the things we have been doing. There have been quite a lot of projects that we have been associating the brand with over the last year, a couple of years. Festivals, ministers, TSHC visitor, N4 opening. Some projects we have been working on in terms of conferences, the Riot Conference, the launch obviously of Sligo 2030 project. And the very successful video we launched last year, a diaspora video and some other diaspora projects as well we've been working on. So it hasn't stood still. We have been using and making sure that the brand is promoted and and, and out there, I suppose, for brand recognition and continuity and familiarity in the community. Thanks, Jimmy. So the Sligo Economic Forum, the members of the Sligo Economic Forum are there. And I suppose what's really important for us is that we link with the Sligo Economic Forum members also, because this is not just a project for Sligo County Council. And what Sligo County Council are leading out on this project. And we, we feel that obviously it's extremely important and a new RCE has prioritized. This project has been very important for ourselves going forward in our redevelopment and re-immersion with all our projects and funds that we want to work on. And we have a coordination group that works here in the council. And I want to recognise Jimmy O'Brien here and Kevin Corravy, who would work very closely with us. And also Gordon Burke, I want to introduce here as well. Gordon is the Economic Officer and Atlantic Economic Corridor Officer for Sligo. And Gordon has been very instrumental in all of this work since he started with us only a few months ago. So our team with corporate and IT, this is very much a, a part of what we want to do. But obviously, we feel that all the, the, the other sectors and all the other agencies, and there are LCDC members. We've given all of them this presentation. We are going to work individually with them in terms of our presentation pack to make sure that they will have banners and so on in their own offices and agencies and that for their own projects and so on, that they will also associate the Sligo brand. And it gets that commonality across. So just, I suppose, maybe to recap a little bit, we have a Sligo marketing communication strategy, and that's associated with the brand. As Sligo County Council members and staff, but for the members, just to remind, you are all ambassadors. And you are doing this every day. I suppose what we're asking is that, and, and as I say, we want to recognise that in a lot of cases, it's already happening and we're delighted with that. But just to remember that, you know, if you can use the brand, refer to the brand, the vision and the key messages associated with the brand, maybe in a speech or maybe in an article or in an interview or whatever. And be prepared to be that official spokesperson and promote and support the brand wherever you can. And in activities that are positively associated, this is a positive cue mark, I suppose, maybe is the easiest way to view it. It doesn't have to be on everything that we do, but we'd like to use it where we are using appropriate positive initiatives that support Sligo. We particularly want to mention today that we, in terms of the work that we're doing over the, over the coming months, we have launched a new video for Sligo, Sligo Live. Sligo more than just a beautiful place. And we'll be following that up with two other videos on invest and visit. So the three pillars will be all represented in this and you'll be seeing those and you already have seen Sligo Live, it was launched on Friday in association with the Corporate Policy Group, who saw it here first. And we, that, that, there's a photo launch there, you'll see visibility of the brand already, you'll see it popping up there at St Hughes's Bridge. You will have received the calendar. You will, we were working on postcards, there's a range of things, members, that just very briefly I mentioned that hopefully you'll be seeing over the next few weeks as well as the articles. We've six commissioned articles that we're working on as well, and some articles as well. We've an article in The Champion and the weekend of this week, an article on our website. You'll see it popping up maybe at the showground pitch side. You'll see it popping up on bus shelters. Their, the jackets, members, you already have, we're working on cups and hats and so on. We'll be talking to members about those and getting them out for your use as well. St Patrick's Day Parade, I know it's, it's a developing now from a one day and we're working with the St Patrick's Day Committee and bid separately on that moving from a one day festival, from one day parade rather to a three day festival. So we have, we'll be branding with them as well to the waters and the wild. We're doing some work on our website. We already have a new page up on our Sligo store behind the brand and also the diaspora landing page, we'll be working on that. And doing some more work with our town twinnings as we go forward. And also with Iwak in terms of promoting Sligo as well. So members, with your permission, we have, we, we might just play the video. Some of you will have seen it over the weekend. It's a minute and a half, if I may, Kehir Lough. And this is our Sligo Live Visit. So it's the first of our refresh campaign around Sligo Live and Vest Visit.
Imagine a remote, far away place where the coastal views are spectacular and the mountain tops are misty. A place where the hearts are warm and the community is welcoming. A place where living doesn't cost the earth and the career prospects are out of this world. A place where smart living and sustainable development are in full focus. A place where you can connect with your inner self and connect with others. Well, we've got all that and more right here in Sligo, in the north west of Ireland. And the best part is, we're not actually that remote. Whether travelling by road, rail or air, getting to Sligo is a breeze. We're just over two hours from Belfast and Dublin and just 45 minutes from Ireland's West Airport. So why not pack your bags and check out what we have to offer? We promise, we're not just a beautiful place. I mean, we are, but we're also so much more, you know? Welcome to Sligo.
Thank you, Kehir Lough. And if there's any issues that the members want to suggest or comment on, we're very happy to take them. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret, and thank you, Gordon. Thanks to the, to the team for, for the work that you, you have done on this. I know this, this has gone on quite a while. I think the presentation is excellent. The, the, the video is excellent as well. And it has got serious traction, I know, on social media pages over, over the weekend. And as I said, at the, at the CPG, I think there's an onus on us all to, to, to share, support, promote this county. And I think we have been doing, but I don't, I think we should be doing it consistently, doing it all the time. And I think that's very, very important. But well done on the work you've done. And I let any members that want to come in now, Councillor Walsh.
Yeah, just to thank Margaret and the team and the whole forum. I think the video is excellent. And I think we probably need to see, I welcome that it's going to be two more. Probably need to see a lot more of this as we've came out of the last two years of no events. And I welcome the fact that the St Patrick's Day Parade will develop into a festival because we are well behind in terms of our festival events across this county compared to every other local authority. So just congratulate Margaret and the team on the work and that it continues. And we will be supportive of anything that is done.
Councillor Catherley.
Thank you, Chair. And it was great to see this at the CPG meeting on Friday. So I won't go back over everything that I've said, but just to, to say well done to the team. It's perfect timing as a country and the county is open enough that we have a rebranding launch. We have everything and more. We're the envy of so many counties around the country for what we have. And I just think it's a matter now of just promoting it. And as the Chair said, and, and it was stated on Friday, it's all about collaboration as well. That we all send that message out there as one kind of united voice that, that Sligo is open for business. It's open to live in, it's open to invest in, it's open to holiday in. So I'd just like to say, well done. The video is fantastic. A lot of people are commenting on it, very, very positive. It's like a breath of fresh air. Somebody commented to me over the weekend. So just hats off to you all who are involved. And I know that you're spending a long time. There's a huge amount of different layers that go to this project. It's not just about a video. I think the diaspora, the project that you have there, I think that's something that we can, we can build on over the next couple of years as well. So just to say well done again and looking forward to the next two visits. And we keep the campaign up year round, 365 days a year, not just over a couple of days. Thank you.
Councillor Maguire.
Thank you, Kehir Lough. I just want to join in my congratulations to Margaret and the team. I was involved at the outset of it as Chair of the LCDC. But I can see huge developments in it since that time. And just want to thank you for all the work that you've put into it and to concur with Councillor Catherley and Taylor there in relation to the onus on us to promote it and to do that consistently. And I think that would be no problem. It's an easy sell. Thank you.
Councillor Mulvey.
Thanks, Kehir Lough. Yeah. And as the current Chair of the LCDC, I want to congratulate Margaret and all the team on the video. It's, it's, I think it's an excellent rebranding video and it's imperative as we exit from the Covid pandemic that County Sligo certainly sets out her market stall and as every county and country will be fighting for vital tourism, that Sligo, I think has an excellent video there that covers a a widespread of social and economic aspects of our county and the positives that we have to offer. And I want to congratulate everybody involved. And I think it's, 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 it's an excellent video.
Thank you, Councillor Gilroy.
Again, just to thank you again for it. It is a wonderful job. Well done. You know, there's, there's always, there's always ways that these things can be done. We, we've got such a natural product to sell. Hopefully that'll make it easy and we can sell Sligo in all three videos.
Councillor Healy.
I want to thank you for the great work you've done. And as it says, fill them up, picture contenders, house of words, and just mean what the picture shows there today. Exactly how good we have Sligo and what we have to offer. And having North Sligo Airport beside us, having our rail transport and everything else, so it's a good one. And I suppose what's nice about it as well, the old turf fire at the end of it really adds to it. Thank you.
Thanks, members. I don't think there's any questions there. Margaret, is there? No, that means you're doing your job well.
Well, thanks, members, for your comments and we'll continue to. And any comments any members want to make outside of this, Gordon or I are happy to take them. So thanks, Kehir.
Thanks again and keep up the good work. Okay, item 10, to note the monthly management report for December 2021, January 2022. Noted. Good. Okay, deferred motions, Councillor Queenan and Councillor Clark, deferred. 12, Councillor Thomas Healy.
Yeah, I'll take that motion now.
It's all right.
First of all.
Seconder.
First of all, I want to, I'm delighted with the response that we received back that that North Sligo is going to be included in this groundwork, the groundwater investigation programme. And as we've seen back in 2018, especially North Sligo, where over a nine year period that went from a full area, the reservoir full down to nearly emptied. And it was only from the good work of the local person that's down there doing the work on it, the, the local caretaker that that made sure that the water stayed in the, stayed in the taps. And if you look at the area we're talking of, there's over 4,000 householders living in Kearney, Maharao, Grange, Cliffony area. So I'm delighted to see that the investigation is going to carry out and they're looking to bore five bore wells. And they're, and the, and the recommendation of this study. So as it says, I'd like you as well, if this could be kept on the agenda for the municipal meeting. Because the report we got, it's, it's three months old now. So if we had an update report, so I'd ask the, if it's all right with the councillors on the municipal areas to, to, if that could be put on the agenda. For an update report on, on this.
Will you submit that as a motion again to that agenda?
No, no, it cannot be transferred over. Can we, can we, no.
No, you don't have to submit.
That's all right. Yeah, yeah, that's all right. Thank you.
Perfect. Councillor Gilroy.
Yeah, just to agree with the motion, we have to be looking for new sources. I know very well the, the three little rivers that that whole system comes from. Now, there has been another source identified at Ardena Glass, but unfortunately, there's a proportion of magnesium in the water, which, which only a very, it has to be mixed with water coming from the river. So it's a delicate, delicate issue. We also have the issue that, that covers really the the Grange, Maharao, Kearney area, as you said, but down in the Cliffony area, it's coming from another source where it may need even more work, not on a supply basis, but on a quality basis. And I'd, I'd welcome it coming to, to the municipal area, maybe even as a, an agenda item separate from the members' proposals that it would come up for a report on it. And, and if that could be done, it would be even better. Thank you.
Okay, we're happy with the report, so we can, we can move on.
That's as an agenda item on the municipal.
Oh, sorry, Councillor Catherley.
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to support the motion and welcome that report. And just to pay tribute to all the staff, particularly out in North Sligo, who are working even over the weekends. If I go up there for a walk, I see staff are, are working there. So there's always someone there looking after us. So I'm looking forward to future developments on that. Thank you.
Councillor Fox. You're amused? Yeah, you're well.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I just want to support the motion. It's a very important motion to have proper water facilities in the provision of water in these areas throughout North Sligo. And I want to support this motion and I'd support it in the municipal meeting as well. I look forward to discussing it at that meeting. Thanks.
All right, we can move on. Okay, 13, Councillor Healy.
Yeah, listen, back in 2017, we seen the regional veterinary lab was under threat of closure. And it was, there was a protest down there by farmers because their, their main concern was the closure of this and it being moved to Atloon. And also, if you had to look at the area that we're talking about, a third of the national flock lies in the catchment area of this area. And that was the major concern. I'm delighted to see that the, the government now has changed their mind and they're going to invest in it, which is the right thing to do. The concerns is that this has not happened yet. I'm asking the ministers, see where exactly this lies. We know the importance of this lab. If you go back to 2001, when we had foot and mouth, it was one of the most important parts to have it. And for local farmers, just, there's a wind of an opportunity there. I think it's two, three hours when you get blood taken on, for farmers and that. And even for wildlife, the Office of Public Works uses them as well for blood samples on different animals as well. So it's important to make sure that this stays here. But another i- issue that was raised at it was points, drop off points. So we'll say like down in Donegal, where they're going to put in drop off points. So a farmer down in Donegal could go to a certain area. He'd leave the carcass of the animal there. It would be picked up from the department there and then brought to Sligo. Here's now where we'd have a situation where you wouldn't have disease spreading across the country, but where there would be, it'd be all monitored and looked after. And I think now what we need is, we need a commitment by the minister, exactly when's this going to happen? What was meant to happen first was the Donegal pickup points were meant to put in, that's a year and a half ago, the talks was going on and still no, no move on it. So as it says, we have an opportunity here and I want to make sure that this happens. As it says, where we had a situation where the threat of closure, now there's a threat, now we need investment. But we still haven't got that. So there's a lot of talking, yet there's not a lot of work. So as it says, I'm asking now that we call on the ministry to see exactly where we are and to get a report on the drop off points that's needed for Donegal and also for the lab in Sligo. We have the best of people in there. There's 17 jobs down there with, with people with PhDs, masters. And it's important that we have the facility to support them as well. Thank you.
Councillor Clark.
Yeah, I just want to support the motion. It, it's a vital cog in, in the farmer's armour in relation to the treatment of animals and, and the healthcare of animals. And it's a facility I use myself regularly and it's great to see that it's, the future is secure. And I certainly agree that the facility needs to be upgraded. And we have absolutely brilliant staff down there, which I know by name, fantastic people. And it's great to see that it's secure. Thank you.
Councillor Fox, have you your hand up from the last member to wish to come in?
Yeah, I wish to come in. Yeah, just to, I want to support this motion. It's a very important facility here and for the region. I use the facility myself, like Councillor Clark was just mentioned. There is, yeah, look, there was, there was funding put in place to ensure that this was going to be, to be maintained within a five year frame. And I hope that that funding will be allocated and you know, that the facility will be maintained and the jobs will be maintained during that five year as promised. So yeah, just to support the motion. Thank you.
Councillor Catherley.
Thank you, Chair. Just to support the motion and just, I suppose, to, to remember the absolutely massive community effort that was made at the time, every single, I think politician and every single community member, all the staff really rallied behind this. And I think it was a great example of community and people power working together to ensure that this very essential facility was kept in our area and, and that it wasn't closed, the jobs and the services would be maintained. And that, you know, that's the, the future of the facility, facility is also maintained. So we, when, when we listen to different spokespeople talking about how important that facility is and all the amount of farmers who lobbied all of us at the time to make sure that this that, that the, the centre stayed, the veterinary facility stayed open. So I'd like to pay tribute and to remember all those people and the staff who, who lobbied so passionately to keep it open. Thank you.
Okay, that motion is agreed. Agreed. Motion fourteen, Councillor Fox.
Yeah, thanks, Chair and members. Yeah. And thank you, Tom Cunfether, for the detailed report. I received the report. Yeah, this is, look, this is becoming the more and more relevant issue. The government, the, the Programme for Government set a target for eighty percent of electricity to be generated by renewable sources by twenty thirty. And I think we should be looking at developing our port to utilise the, the facilities that are already there in place to harness the energy from offshore wind energy. It's a huge issue. It's going to be a huge issue going forward. I think now is the time to deal with this here in Sligo. And I think we need to act quickly. And there's a lot going on with the national government in terms of the development of our ports. And I think Sligo should be part of the necklace of ports that are going to be included in the offshore wind energy project. I think offshore wind energy is going to be the North Sea oil for, for, for Ireland. There's huge potential there. And we need to find out new ways to harness that energy and get it to where it's, where it's needed on land. So a lot of work needs to be done at, at our port to do so. And the distribution of green hydrogen is another big area. And Sligo is unique in its own way, right, that we have a railway that runs right down into our port. And it should be utilised for the rail electrification and the distribution of, of this energy that, that possibly can be harnessed from the sea. So we need to act now. And there's huge potential for job creation, for the assembly of turbines and for, you know, I know that the port needs to be dredged. There's funding readily available to do that. And these are things that need to be worked on straight away in the interest of Sligo and in the interest of our children and our children's children. How are we going to provide energy for them in the future? And these are the questions that we need to ask. And Sligo needs to focus on this. It's a very important issue. Thank you.
Councillor Fox, Councillor Walsh, just support the motion. Is that a motion agreed? Agreed. Okay, we'll move on. Fifteen on the agenda, Councillor Catherley. Secondary, Councillor Healy. You're amused, Councillor Catherley.
Thanks, Chair. And the loss of eighty jobs is shocking news, as everyone has heard, to Caluni and the wider region. And, and the owners have confirmed that they're closing the manufacturing facility. And this announcement has stunned the local community. And it's devastating for the workers and their families. The one positive that, that it has come out of it is that they're saying that no redundancies are likely this year. And this has given some window of opportunity to engage with the IDA and all relevant estate agencies and to try and find alternative employment for these workers. And so B-Brawn have confirmed that they are retaining the research and development capability within Sligo for the global wound care business. And this will hopefully provide some further employment possibilities. And Deputy Marion Harkin has actually contacted the Minister for Enterprise, Trade and Employment, asking that, that he and his department leave no stone unturned in their efforts to retain these jobs. And, and it's vital that every effort is made to support and grow this research and development capability. And just to say that on a personal level from B-Brawn over the years, they're, they were absolutely fantastic in the community and they've been a fantastic resource to us in St Mary's College of Valles Adair. Over the years, we've been able to bring groups of students who are doing LCVP and work experience to the facility. Always very welcome, always very helpful, always very open. And so they, they have been a great support to us in St Mary's College. So I think that now is the time for, for us and for the community and for all the different agencies to support the workers and to support the facility. So I'm asking for a delegation from the council to seek a meeting with the Minister for Enterprise, Trade and Employment to discuss the recent announcement about the closure of B-Brawn, to discuss with the, and engage with the IDA and Enterprise Ireland with the view to working towards finding alternative sources of employment and to investigate the possibility of expanding the research capability at B-Brawn in Sligo. Thank you.
Councillor Healy.
Yeah, first of all, look, today, I suppose, my thoughts are with the, with the employees and also all the construction workers that work in, in there. There's over twenty constructors come and do work in the area. But also for the village of, of Caluni. In nineteen eighty four, when, or eighty four, when they came, we were just after seeing the closure of Gauna, which had at one time had over seven hundred jobs. And I worked in the butcher shop there myself at the time of the closure of, of Gauna. And you could see there was five butcher shops in Caluni at that time. And you could see the shops closing up over the next couple of years. And there is a fear factor out there in Caluni now at the moment, which mean that this will have an, an on effect. There's a consultation happening today for the employers and the employees of exactly what will happen to the future. And I suppose I got an email from the plant manager on the day that it was announced. And I know a lot of people working. I went up to the factory and I spoke with a good few with husband or wives working at, which mean they're running after buying houses. We have people that's in it thirty five years. Does mean it's, it was a great company there. It was great to have it in the town. But as it says, I want to also thank, I want to thank CEO and I want to thank John Riley. Because as it says, when I got the email, what do you do as a councillor? How can I help? What can I do? And I contacted the CEO and I contacted John Riley over Sligo Enterprise. And John was shocked. He didn't know and you seemed to know what was happening around like that. I also contacted the IDA regarding what was happening. They were aware of it and they said there was a process in place. But I want to also thank Leader, June Murphy and Leader, who set up a package and for the company on, does mean what they can do for them and how they can help them. I contacted all RTDs, they all responded back to me and I also contacted the Minister regarding this. I think there's a job of work here for us all. But if we, we want to be looking at this on a, on a bigger scale. Like there was jobs lost in, in Valles Adair, Caluni and, and in Sligo Town over the last four years. Jobs, does mean we're hearing jobs coming in, but we don't take into consideration the jobs that we lose it as well. Because we're only balancing ourselves out. So there needs to be a big onus on this. Does mean, as it says, we watched there of a DVD, the video there you're on about promoting Sligo. We have a job of work here to do. And as I've asked to meet with the TDs and I think a delegate of councillors need to meet with the IDA as well. And we need to find out from the IDA what work, how, who they're inviting in here and see can we get something done. I mean, we're lucky enough that these jobs aren't gone today. It is a year before these jobs are closing. And we have that timeframe to work on it and see exactly how we can get done. So I think the onus is on us. Does mean that's what we're here for. We're here to make sure we help and support these families that need it. And now the need is more than ever. As it says, we have people out there that, does mean, when I went up to meet them in the factory, does mean, what can you say to somebody who's losing their job? Does mean there's not a lot you can say. Just be there to be supportive and help them. So as it says, my thoughts are with them families and also the people that surround it that depended on that factory. So, thank you.
Councillor Walsh.
Yeah, I want to echo the majority of what was said already, Keheluk. I think it's very unfortunate that we're losing these eighty jobs in Caluni. I've, I've contacted Thonish's office and I know that EI and IDA are working actively on this. I spoke to some of the staff yesterday. And it has been well flagged, I suppose, with them for, for a period. So there, as Councillor Catherley has pointed out, there's not going to be any immediate layoffs. Work is going to start next week, I understand, with the unions involved in terms of redundancy. And I know the IDA are actively working with someone to take over this site. I think it's important that we have an accurate picture of Caluni and that the context is factual. There is no vacant units currently in Caluni. There never has been so many people working in Caluni. And there's not a week that, or a month that I'm contacted with someone looking for premises in Caluni. And long may that continue. I know there's three new businesses will be moving into three premises in the coming weeks. So I think that context is very, very important. Again, I want to thank Pat McLaughlin, the Site Director at B-Brawn and the team. And I know that everything will be done for the staff. Thank you.
Councillor Gibbons.
Keheluk, I wasn't actually going to even come in on this, but I suppose because it is, because this was in my area, but realistically, any jobs that's lost anywhere in the county affects the whole county and affects our economy and our destabilising of this county itself. The one thing that I want to say in relation, we've seen this over the years, we've seen Sligo as a gateway city during the time of the boom. We've seen all the resources that was coming to Sligo, jobs and everything else, never actually happened, not one. We lost a lot of jobs at that time. Those places closed down, right, left and centre. There was a huge debate going on between the unions, government and everything else. Nothing done about it. Now we're a growth centre and here we have a perfect example of this repeating itself again. And I think myself that this, these eighty jobs need to be looked at with realistically by a government level, not, and by the IDA, not just the likes of us, as Councillors, all right, highlighting it. But it needs to be looked at to see is there any way of salvaging these jobs. And if there isn't, there should be something, should be dedicated into that area for the likes of those eighty people. As my colleague says, there, there's people there, young families there with mortgages, big mortgages. And other people that call their home improvement loans and things like that. And realistically, those people need to be looked at. And it is not in anybody's interest to see eighty jobs gone. So I'm support the motion in relation to it. But I really think that it's at government level, the pressure needs to go on. And I will ask my colleagues here, the self the government parties, is to put pressure on our ministers. Step in in relation as to see what can be done. Thank you very much, Keheluk.
Councillor Goodright.
Yes, I, I think we're all, we're all shocked on the, the twenty seventh of January, where you got this notification about this particular closure. B-Brawn has, has been a great employment provider, excuse me, in Sligo for the last thirty or forty years. And it really is a huge loss to the area. We have to kind of look, and I know that this council wanted to have Caluni included in the regional growth centre, which it's not. It only goes as far as Valles Adair, unfortunately. And maybe over the coming years, if we can set up a commuter route out to, I think that was part to the problem, that there wasn't kind of a designated bus route and all this sort of thing in and out from Caluni was part of the reason why it wasn't. But as I say, we've all been in contact back with the factory and look, we're all there to help whatever we can do. But it's, it's, it is a loss, but it is down to trading conditions. And that's what they said clearly in the thing that really the figures weren't there to sustain it. They couldn't compete with people who are able to produce on a much larger scale. There have been spin off industries from it. I, I was talking to an endowed man in Roscommon who set up a factory in Longford, who had started his career there. And I think he had about two hundred people working for him in Longford. Very successful company, doing wound treatments, which is a very lucrative business. So it has, there is still stuff that's coming out and going to be continuing to come out that was born in B-Brawn. But hopefully we can get a replacement industry into the unit as quickly as possible. I think there's no point in us kind of lagging a dead horse, but it would be nice to have something similar to it that would, that would be able to compete internationally for the business that they need to compete for. Thank you.
And Councillor Bree.
Very briefly, I, I also support the motion. And I think, you know, like colleagues, my sympathy goes out to the staff who will be losing their, their jobs. It came as a surprise, the closure, the announcement of the closure came as a surprise to an awful lot of us. But I, I understand that it was flagged in advance in, in, to, to some members of staff. And in that context, I presume that the management was and must have advised the IDA of the potential of the, the, the potential closing of the, of the factory. And, and I, I believe that the IDA taking cognizance of that would have been an R, seeking an alternative operator to, to move into the space. And in that context, I think the motion is, is timely in that it emphasizes the, the importance that we place on, on this issue. And I, I believe it will, it will encourage the IDA to identify an alternative employer. But I fully support the motion, Keheluk.
And thanks to the members. And look, I'd like to support the motion as well. And I'd like to echo everything that has been said. And that if we, anything possible that we can do, my sympathies as well are with the staff, these people with the eighty jobs. I think we, we need to do everything that we can together with all our parties, with the IDA, and to make sure that no stone is left unturned, that we do get some industry into this facility and new industry into Caluni in this facility. So I certainly support the motion. The motion is asked for a delegation of Sligo County councillors to seek a, a meeting with the Minister for Enterprise, Trade and Employment. I believe we agree on that.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. Thank, I certainly support the motion and offer my sympathy to the workers who have had quality jobs withdrawn. But I have an ongoing concern about our place when the IDA go into negotiate, what, 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 where we are in the line of towns being delivered. I always feel we lack having a minister at the table when jobs are being given out. And that, and that also in order to attract jobs, you have to have housing. And if we're slow moving with the ongoing development of housing, we're not, it's difficult for the IDA or anybody else to go out and promote us as an area where we all know life is good, the pace of life, the scenery. But if you haven't places to put people in housing, it's very, very difficult for any department or minister or any IDA to, to go forward looking. In the past, we had, infrastructure was the problem. And now that has been solved and it's a great blessing. And every time I travel on it, it's hard to even think about what the road was like from Bellicer Way. But I do think that when housing comes before us, that jobs is, is side by side with it. That we, we do everything we can to promote the ongoing development of public, social, private, all kinds of housing, because that in turn attracts jobs and leaves, leaves it easier for somebody at a bargaining table to promote Sligo.
You're absolutely correct, Councillor O'Grady. And so can we write to the minister looking for a, a meeting? And we can, we can agree the motion. Councillor Catherley, are you okay with that?
Yes, and thank you. Thanks everyone for their support. And I know that we do have a very strong IDA team here in the North West. And I know that they are working hard on this. And again, it's like what we're saying, you know, from, for with Corlin and Oog and the, the Sligo Live Investors, it's all about collaboration. I think the more people who are behind this and a show of support and strength, the better. And I suppose, and it's important to show the company as well, that everybody is behind them and we're working as hard as we can to ensure, I suppose, some sort of a future for the company. But it's, it's hard and it's difficult and we shouldn't, I suppose, be trying to guess what's going to happen in the future. But I suppose it's good to see that everybody is in support of this. Thank you.
Okay, sixteen, Councillor Catherley again. But that's to be deferred.
Yes.
That's to be deferred. Yep.
I'll defer that one. Thank you.
Seventeen, are we seconded? Second councillor Walsh.
And for, for this motion, I'm asking for the council to ask the Minister for Education, the outcome of the review of the GESH scheme. It has been stated, she has said that hundreds of schools in disadvantaged areas would be included, yet the criteria for inclusion has not been released. And following on that, I've been asked by principals to find out where the scheme is at, where the scheme is at and when their scheme, when their school is going to be included in this scheme. Hundreds of schools are waiting to be added to this GESH scheme as part of the extension of the programme. Every school has its own needs and different needs. No two schools are the same. And there are many disadvantaged schools who are not GESH schools. And for, for anybody who isn't familiar with the GESH school, the benefit for, from lower pupil teacher ratio grants and access to the school completion programme. So many more schools now need to be in the free book scheme. And this GESH scheme actually hasn't been reassessed in a good few years. So it's time for it to be looked at again. The pupil teacher ratio needs to be decreased by twenty, from twenty five to one to twenty four to one. And there is a promise of the recruitment of an additional 350 teachers and 1,165 special needs assistance. But the principals who have contacted me are from non-GESH schools who, who are working in schools where they are seeing a lot of child poverty, some deprivation. And they cannot keep assisting the students and the families with the resources that they have. And they need further government resources. So as soon as the schools know whether they're going to be in this GESH scheme or not, the, the more that they can plan for the future of their schools. So I'm asking for your support on this. Thank you.
Okay, is that agreed? Agreed. Item eighteen and item twenty are similar motions. Can we take them together? Councillor Gilroy, do you want your eighteen?
Look, the, the. We have, we have, we've had a long run at, at the helicopter. Sorry, I was caught a little bit on the hop there. We've had a long run at trying to get the, the search and rescue service maintained here in Sligo. We got some good news actually since the motion was originally put in and since, since councillor Walsh's motion was put in as well. The search and rescue 118 is the busiest search and rescue service in Ireland. In 2021, Dublin had 126 rescues, Shannon had 230, Waterford had 145. Sligo had 266. That's over double what went out from Dublin with all the ports and all the sailing clubs and everything else around Dublin. There's been far more from, over double from Sligo. We now have an amended pre qualification questionnaire, which states that the existing configuration of Dublin, Cork, Waterford and Sligo are specified in the programme. And that's, that's a great, that's, that's a great boost to us. But the fact of the matter is, the airport has to be secure for this to be secure. And we need funding to come to the airport. Sligo County Council is a 50% partner or 51% partner, I believe, in the airport. Myself and councillor Walsh and councillor Baker and councillor Shinath McGuire are all members of the board there, as is Marie Whelan, a huge asset to the board, I might add. Sligo in 2021 covered callouts from Carlingford in County Louth to Mallonhead, to the Iron Islands and to Loch Durg on the Shannon. It's a huge area and the service that those guys offer is huge. And we have to get behind it in whatever way we can. But we need to force the issue that funding has to be provided from central government to maintain the airport. There needs to be, Sligo needs to be treated at least equally with Waterford. Waterford has got funding over the last number of years because maybe they were in the political situation where there was a particular vote bought down there and the money went to that airport. But Sligo Airport is every bit as important and more important. It needs to cover that. You cannot cover down to the Iron Islands from the airport in Donegal. You cannot cover up to Mallonhead from Knock. So Sligo is the central place for the region that has to be covered and it's important. But without the infrastructure, without the funding, that board out there is fighting a losing battle. And we need to show our support for it. But we need to write to the Minister for Transport to seek funding from them to ensure that the airport's future is secure. Thank you.
councillor Walsh.
Thanks, Kehir. I'm not going to echo everything that councillor Gilroy has said. We had a board meeting last week. It was probably one of the more positive board meetings since 2019. We had two big wins. One, that Sligo will remain one of the four bases in the new tender for search and rescue services. And the second, that we, we'll be reimbursed up to 200,000 of capital costs, which we have spent on runway reconfiguration and upgrading the lighting system. But in saying that, it is important that we don't become complacent. And certainly the board going forward will be looking at and exploring ways of developing new opportunities at, at the airport. As councillor Gilroy has pointed out, Sligo Airport is a vital piece of infrastructure in this county and to the, to the North West. And all we're looking for is fair play. And Waterford, we all know, has received 1 million in expenditure supports from 2018 to 2019. And it isn't, is in the same boat as Sligo. It has no commercial flights going in and out, but yet has received capital support of up to a million euro. And we're not clear of what they have received last year because their financial accounts haven't been published as yet. So we have another 80,000 worth of work to, to do at the airport. And it's important that the facility is supported, like other facilities are currently being supported going forward. And certainly the board's position will be to lobby for that going forward. So we have, we're calling for this motion to be passed and that every other local authority, that the search and rescue aircraft rescue 118, as councillor Gilroy has pointed out, the busiest coastguard service, search and rescue service in the country. And it is very clear that if the department and the Irish Coast Guard had their way, Sligo Airport would not be operating the search and rescue contract. It's a big win for politics and it's a, it's a win for democracy. And I want to thank all politicians of every party and none for the support in this issue. Because there is no doubt, if we didn't raise our voices in terms of the capital expenditure and in terms of the rescue base and that contract tender being altered, then certainly Sligo would not be one of those locations.
councillor Castorley.
And thank you, Chair. And I'd like to wholeheartedly support the motion. And it is great news that, that Sligo has now, it's been confirmed that Sligo is one of the four, has been included in this new contract. It was touch and go there for a while. There was a lot of, well, there was some doubt about it being included. And I think the fact that Sligo has to fight so hard for funding just to keep this vital service going. It's an absolute necessity for our region. But the fact that we have to keep asking and the board has to keep asking, and I was a member of the board before as well. And just to pay tribute to Joe Corcoran, who has fought for this night and day. And I don't know how he still actually, you know, has the energy to keep going with, with the amount of time and effort that he has spent in looking for basic funding for this facility. That really, we should be getting it every year. We should not have to be asking and going out with a begging bowl and asking for the 250 euro. And only if, and councillor Walsh has said that, that, that funding has been made available now. But we shouldn't have to be asking for this. When people do realise that literally this is a life saving facility here, a life saving service. And we have all in some shape or form been touched by this. And, and we will, and hopefully, you know, that, that most of us won't have to avail. But, but some of us will have to avail of that service. And if it's left, and if it hadn't been fought for, and I have to pay particular tribute as well to Marion Harkett, who constantly raised this in the doll and clarified and got, got, got definitive answers from the Tornish that that Sligo was to be included in this contract. Because up to January, there were only three locations mentioned in the contract. And it was, you know, it wasn't 100% clear that Sligo is going to be kept on in this new contract. So, and I, and I again pay tribute to everybody who is involved and the board as well, who have worked really hard on this. But it is an absolute necessity. It should not be on the agenda again, that we will be looking for this type of funding and this type of support next year and the following year. So that it, it needs to be included in an annual plan from the department that this funding will automatically be given to Sligo Airport. Thank you.
councillor McGuire.
Thank you, I'll be brief. But as a member of the board, I just want to join my support for all that's been said. And especially those kind words, which I think are very well deserved in relation to Joe Corcoran, who does phenomenal work. But I think, as has been outlined, it's unnecessary. And he shouldn't have to constantly come with the begging bowl year on year, looking for what are basic funds for a vital service. Thank you.
Councillor O'Grady.
Just, I'd like to support the motion and again compliment the board members who have worked with Joe Corcoran tirelessly over many years. And it's dreadful that for the small amount of funding that's needed, that this begging has to be done every year. And apart from the rescue, when the helicopter pad at Sligo University Hospital, which was out of commission for over two years, patients were able to be brought from Sligo, from Stranthill to Galway, Dublin, wherever they needed to go. So it's a hugely important piece of infrastructure. Now, I know the hospital pad has been upgraded and patients are brought from there. But it has been hugely important to the people of this area, certainly for the last two and a half years. So I want to acknowledge the work done by all the committed members. And I have to say of all parties and none, and as was said, Joe Corcoran, for the work done in securing this funding.
councillor Gilroy, you.
Yeah, just to, just to finish up, look, to thank everybody for their support. Thank all of our TDs because they've all been on this case. And I know Frank Feehan organised a meeting with the, the coastguard and the department back for us on, I think it was the 23rd of December of not last year, the previous year. I remember I was working in Dublin that day myself and, and was zooming in from, from a building site. But it's, it's very important, yes, Joe Corcoran, huge amount of work done by Joe, so I'd like to echo that. And indeed, the former councillor Albert Higgins, who's chairman of the airport out there for years. And Albert has put huge work into it. And again, to thank the, I have to say, the, the members of the board from this council have, have really put their shoulder to the wheel and, and I salute you all. I'm well done, thank you.
I just want to echo the, the same words and hopefully that we will be put on the same level of playing field as other airports in a similar boat. Thank you.
And I'd just like to support the motion as well and just like to, to compliment the board members and our, and our own board members here and the work that you have done. This is a vital service. I mean, I have to agree with everything that was said about it. And we will, we will certainly do everything we can as well to, to keep this on the agenda and to make sure that we're not put in this situation again. Okay, thank you. Teen councillor Gilroy.
Thank you. We had a motion which we unanimously passed here last May and a letter went to the Department of Justice. I, I'm not going to signal out the, the minister. It, it, it seems to have got lost somewhere along the way, but we never got a reply. The department was definitely resistant to what we were looking for last May, for this to be included. And Lisa Chambers took up the, the cudgel to, to fight this. And she spoke with Eve and Una, Eve is, is a Sligo woman, Eve McDowell, a Grange woman, who was a victim of stalking. And it was, it was so good to, that Lisa had taken it up. And she didn't even realise that a number of councillors around the country had, had put in similar motions. And it was pushed right around the country. And I had sent it to a lot of colleagues and it was passed in, in councils up and down the country. But unfortunately, the department was not listening. And it just seemed to come to the Shannon, this bit of private members legislation from Lisa just came around the weeks of Ashley Murphy's murder. And if nothing else good comes out of that awful tragedy, this may be something good the department have turned around on their heels. The Kehir look of the Shannon, and I, I was talking to him only yesterday about it. Mark Daly said to me that in the history of the Shannon, less than 20 private members, in the history of, of the Rocktus, less than 20 private members pieces of legislation have got in. And I think we can all be proud here that we pushed it. But look, I'll just run through what I have here on it. Legislation to criminalise stalking in Ireland. The laws as currently stands does not provide for a standalone offence of stalking. Victims must use harassment legislation to take a case and to try and get justice. This has been deemed totally inadequate and there is a strong case to criminalise stalking. Work with campaigners and the co-founders of Stalking Ireland, Eve McDowell and Eve Una Ring. Both women are victims of stalking. Drafted, they helped draft the, the non fatal offences against the person amendment stalking bill 2021. And that's what I'm looking for your support for today. A number of local authorities across Ireland, including ourselves, passed motions in support of this legislation. The Law Reform Commission in 2016 recommended this change in the law. Other jurisdictions, Scotland, England and Wales, where stalking was made a standalone criminal offence more than a decade ago, have seen a huge increase in, in where it's been used. The other good part about this, because we have to worry in an area like this, you could have, you could have someone stalking someone from North Sligo around Bondoran. And they could be from Bellic and they can't be touched. But she's also worked with Naomi Long on this, the minister in Northern Ireland, to try and promote that it's a cross border piece of legislation. I hope it doesn't fall over what's happened in the north in the last week. The effect of similar legislation in other jurisdictions was stark. There was a threefold increase in reporting in stalking as a crime and a twofold increase in prosecutions. The initial view of the minister and the Department of Justice was that this legislation was not needed, that the current harassment law was sufficient. In the last number of weeks, as I've said, there has been a change in position within the department and the minister is now fully behind it. And I just give you what stalking behaviour is. Persistently following, watching, pestering or communicating by any means of communication with or, or about a person. Purporting to be the other person. Attempting to make repeated unwanted contact with a person or any, any other repeated unwanted behaviour towards a person. Making threats of violence, either directly or indirectly against a person or against their family, their home, their colleagues, their friends or their pets. Loitering in the vicinity of a person in a manner that causes that person to experience fear, apprehension, fright or significant distress for themselves or others. Monitoring or spying on a person by any means. Interfering with the property of a person or behaving in any other way that a reasonable person would expect would cause a person to suffer fear or alarm. So I ask you to support this motion. Thank you very much.
councillor Walsh.
Thank you, Chair. As the last time we supported motion, definitely feel that this is something that needs to be pushed now. Unfortunately, I think in Ireland, we have an awful thing to wait till after the horse is bolted before you try and lock the stable door. This is something that needs to be addressed urgently, quickly. And as councillor Gilroy said, cross borderly. I, I know for a fact there are certain cases here in Sligo where it is done as terms of harassment rather than stalking. You know, you have people making complaints and generally there is no law that can be, people can be done for. So support the motion now and I will support that motion councillor Gilroy.
councillor Castorley.
Thank you, just to support the motion and to pay tribute to Eve and Una for bringing this to national attention and persevering with it and not giving up. And credit to Lisa Chambers, who has, and other senators as well, who has, who have run with this and brought to the top of the agenda and have not let it go. So just credit to everybody who is involved. And I'm sure that, that legislation will be introduced to make sure that, that the stalking is actually a criminal offence. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to lend my support to, to the motion as well. And I'd like to compliment you councillor Gilroy. You've, you've done a lot of work on this as well. And just, you know, just to say that absolutely no one should be living in fear in this day and age.
Just thank you, thank you, Kehir. Just thank you, thank you Cahill. And just to say that it is down to the two, the two women, Eve, who I've known since she was a baby, and Una down in Cork, they did the real work. Cahill, like you and I are trying to put something together and hopefully we'll have a bit of word on that in the next few days. Maybe to bring Lisa to Sligo to talk about it. And Eve has agreed to come as well. So might be a wee bit premature on just announcing it today, but it'll come in the next week or so hopefully. Thank you.
Okay, 21, councillor Watch.
Thank you, Cahill. And I have to say, thanks Cahill. And I have to say, this would be a fantastic project, particularly for the two satellite villages, of Calouni and Ballasadair, and being able to link back into Carrero. This natural corridor is in effect there. I think it's disappointing that the NTA has decided not to fund the study for the commuter corridor and cycleway link in Sligo to Ballasadair and Calouni. Again, this would be a fantastic project and they wouldn't, well, in the main, there wouldn't have to be much land acquisition because the route is naturally there and the space. So while that active travel scheme is now focused on towns and villages alone. And it's important that, I suppose, going forward, that the minister and Minister of State, that we allow villages to be linked. I think that's very, very important. While year one and year two, we have received quite a healthy budget again this year for year two of the active travel programme. I think it's important in year three that the department recognises that we should be, should have a safe active travel route link in our villages such as Calouni to Ballasadair and to Carrero. I welcome the government has funded as part of this year's active travel scheme, the replacement of the footpath and improvement of pedestrian access from Calouni to Ballasadair. We have, part of this has been completed Kirk-Nagat and part coming out of Ballasadair. It's important that we continue this right into Calouni and even up as far as Calouni railway station, of which that piece of walk-in infrastructure is in very poor condition. So I welcome the reply to a point in that we will be making improvements from Calouni to Ballasadair and link in Calouni back to the railway station. I think that's very, very welcome as part of this year's active travel programme. However, it is important, and I would ask with the permission of the council and the members, that we write to the minister and Minister of State to ask them as part of year three and active travel programme, that we do consider being allowed to link villages as part of the scheme criteria. We will have gone through two healthy budgets and it is important that we spend year one and year two of that budget in full. Now that we have an active travel team in place and maybe the CEO might confirm that we have a full complement of our active travel team in place. Or Tom Brennan, I see he's online, that the complimentary staff is now in place in that active travel team.
Okay, councillor Healy, seconded the.
Yeah, it's disappointing. I think this was a great opportunity here. If you have the Calouni to Ballasadair footpath, it's only to reinstated. There was always a footpath there between Calouni and Ballasadair. And then there is a footpath there going the whole way into Sligo that you could cycle only for it's too narrow. And I think that we had a great opportunity here now if this was looked at serious. Going in along, in from Carrero in, there's a lot of swampland there where this footpath is there originally. And I couldn't see how we couldn't talk to the people there and see if we could get a bit of that ground. But look, it is what it is. The most important thing is that there is a safe way for people to make their ways through towns and villages. And as I says, this came about by a campaign group who came together, local residents regarding access to and from Calouni and Ballasadair. And I'm delighted to see that, and I want to thank Tom Brennan and the work that they have done in getting funding for this to date. Thank you.
Councillor Queenan.
I welcome the funding, overall funding for active travel. And I wish the new engineers who are now part of this every success, two of them were West Sligo area, had experienced in West Sligo. And if you work in West Sligo, you get good experience. Would you agree councillor Cahill?
Absolutely.
But I looked at the figures.
I do a lot of work in West Sligo.
Well, you shouldn't. I'll deal with that urgently. Now, I looked at the figure, the overall figure for active travel in the county and we heard councillors here cribbing about areas that didn't get the funding. But if you take the whole Tuba Curry, Ballymose, West Sligo area and funding, allocation of funding, it's very small. And I want the manager to address this in the future. That's all I'll say at this moment.
We agree, we agree. Okay, the motion is agreed. We can move on. Sorry, Tom, you want, councillor Castle, you indicated to come in again there, did you?
Thank you, Chair.
Hand up from before, no?
No, no. And just to support the motion and just in relation to the active travel and the new engineers, can I just acknowledge the work that's been done recently for the safe passing signs, the 1.5 cycling signs to show, or to indicate to drivers to give a distance of 1.5 when overtaking cyclists. So just to acknowledge that, it's been a while coming, but they're there now. Thanks very much.
Okay, thank you. Tom, do you want to come in there? Tom Brennan?
I suppose I don't have much to add really, just that we, there is, our active travel team is in place and up and running and staff, the engineers are currently now working with Gusto to roll out that scheme as quickly as possible. There's a multitude of schemes in the programme, so it's going to be a challenge to, I suppose, develop them and move them forward as quickly as possible. And we hope to make progress on the footpath between Ballasadair and Calouni this year.
Okay, motion's agreed. We can move on. 22, councillor Mulvey.
Thanks Cahill. Look, this motion, I've been contacted by numerous people living in the Maron Park estate in Ballymose, and I call on Sligo County Council to put in place an estate enhancement scheme for this estate. It's an old estate and the majority of residents living in the estate of 60 plus houses are retirees. And some of the properties are in the ownership of Sligo County Council. It's a nice area and it's a well-maintained, very quiet area, but there's a large green section in it that needs enhancement. It could do with some, maybe some seating for the elderly that they could go out and sit and, you know, outside their houses. And some of the footpaths, while the surface on some of them is in good condition, a lot of the carving is broken and cracked and can be quite dangerous. And it also needs to be looked at regarding drop carbon for people that have mobility issues. But also on an issue that I raised before about the estate is traffic camming. The traffic camming on the road down to the new health centre in Ballymose, which goes down by Maron Park, needs to be addressed. Because I've been contacted before and, you know, over different times regarding the speed of traffic. And while the new health centre is welcome there, it's extremely busy. And people are coming out of their houses and they're saying that cars and vehicles are flying up and down. And while there's another new estate at the bottom of Maron Park, you know, it's created a lot of traffic in the area. And unfortunately, it's a concern for the residents. So I note the reply from Tom Brennan, that there's no budget for a state enhancement scheme this year. But the footpaths can be delivered on footpath enhancement programme. But I think also the fact that the local authority has some of the houses in it, if the green area could be looked at, maybe to enhance it, to put in some public seating, it could be a great asset to the elderly people living in the estate. And hopefully the footpaths can, issue can be addressed. And the traffic camming, I think, needs to be prioritised in the Maron Park estate in case that there is an accident. It's an issue that's on a lot of the residents' minds. Thanks Cahill.
Councillor Baker.
Just to support councillor Mulvey, and tis one of the oldest estates within Ballymose. And people in it are the salt of the earth. And I think it's sort of time that there be something done there to show appreciation to the estate. So, thank you.
Councillor Milani.
Yeah, just to support the motion and I suppose put particular emphasis on the green area. I think the green area does definitely need enhancing and I think it should be a huge advantage. There's a lot of retired people living there now at the moment. And I think it's a huge advantage to them to enhance that whole area.
Yeah, I'd like to support the motion as well and I won't go back over everything that was said. But I do feel that in the years ahead, in the short term, that we, we are going to see problems coming from the states in charge of the council. And I think that the onus may be on us as a council to look for a separate fund for this type of thing. I think it's important that we think about that over the next number of months and number of years. Okay, the motion is agreed. Okay, 23, councillor Watch.
Thanks Cahill. Myself and councillor Boyle had a motion down on this skateboard park in 2020. I have to say, I'm a bit disappointed with the reply. It's stating that when resources permit, the council will carry out preliminary research into provision of a skateboard park. You know, I don't think there's a huge amount of resources to carry out preliminary assessment in relation to a skateboard park. The nearest one is in Galway and Atlone, and we've a growing amount of skaters now in the county. In fact, in my own area, we're now using the side of Bally Trehead Bridge for people to skate. So the departments, across both departments are very, very clear. The Thor program now allows for the provision of skate parks in that funding stream. Likewise, the Department of Sport, the sports capital unit, allows for an allocation of skate parks in their allocation. So we have none in the county. There's a growing number, as I say, of skaters in Sligo town and the county. And there are very few places to go for those who wish to skate, very few suitable places. There is a private indoor place for skating. But a skate park would have many benefits, not only for the skating community, but also adding another social outlet for children and young people. And we, as members of this local authority and the local authority itself, should encourage courage anything which will improve children's and young people's mental health and physical activity levels. There is an onus on us to do that. Do we think it's safe for skaters to now use the side of Bally Trehead Bridge for skating? In November 2020, we had submitted this motion in relation to this. So I would ask that we look at the provision off a park. We have a huge amount of space in Clevera, which to me would make sense that we have a park in Sligo town. The land is there for it and there isn't a huge amount of resources out laid for the provision of a skateboard, skate park in terms of the financials. So I would ask that we do have an explorative piece of work into this as soon as possible. Thank you.
Councillor Maguire.
Thank you Cahill. Skate park is a motion that I've also had down previously. And at that time, I was highlighting the fact that in Strand Hill, we were at that point only at the outset of developing the new surf centre. Thankfully, it's well up now. And it is disappointing, as councillor Watch has outlined, that there hasn't been any progress in relation to this matter. Skating and surfing go hand in hand. They are very, they require very similar skills. And I, at the time I brought the motion, obviously was advocating for a skate park in Strand Hill. And I know that I think all of my colleagues joined in supporting the motion, but sought a skate park in their own areas, as of course they would. And there is not a huge amount of outlay required in developing the skate park. I've seen several of them around the country in the last year. They're all really busy. It requires minimum space, minimum development. And as has been outlined, a huge plus for people's physical, young people in particular, physical and mental health. And we heard it directly from the Corlannan Oit this morning, they were asking us as a council to provide safe outdoor spaces. And this is a perfect opportunity. We've lots of plots of ground around the county. I think it could easily be developed. It wouldn't take huge resources. And I really would like to see this matter progressed. I think our young people will thank us for it. Thank you.
Councillor Gibbons.
Cahill, this isn't just today or yesterday. This motion has come from the council. Over 20 years ago, it was raised on the Borough Council, as councillor Grady can verify and councillor Bray and others that was there. It has always been, it has always been a motion that was always supported on the Borough Council by everybody that have it on. And I do know my colleague Chris McManus had brought it up while he was on Sligo County Council. The one thing that I'd ask in relation to it, because it seems it's always put off nearly on the long finger and the long finger and the long finger. And more and more people are getting more interested in outdoor activities. And especially since, I think, that was kind of the only benefit I could say that came out of Covid. Because the one aspect of it, it got people back out to walk and the families doing things or whatever together. But would there be a possibility in maybe getting a costin gone up in relation to it? That if it was a thing that we were able to recognise, the property over there at Clevera, and maybe get a costin if what it is. And that way then we know where we're going, that it's not just pie in the sky. Like I remember another project that happened in Sligo years ago, but it was never costing enough for it. Whether the ramp at Bertham Smith's was in relation to people with disabilities. And that ramp at the time was put off and put off. It said it cost too much, the services were beneath the road. But you know what? In the end, when we dig it, the figure, the figure was 80,000 pounds at the time. Because the footpath was so much below the road and the services all had to be altered for that. And that's where the costins went. But at least when we had a figure, we were able to work towards it. So what I'm asking, would it be a possibility to get a costin done of the skate park and what it requires? And then if it was brought back in front of this council, we might be able to look at where we're able to get money down through grants. That it'll be from sports and recreation or wherever. But there is the possibility. But without that figure there, we have nothing. That is the reality. It's pie in the sky. As I said, it's gone on over 20 years. And I think myself that it is something, it's warranted, it is something there for young people, it's encouraging healthy outdoor activity. And that is the one thing that I would say in relation to. So if we maybe go on a costin on it and what it would, the overall costin, and we could look at that, where we'd be able to allocate money.
Councillor Grady.
I would like to support the motion. And when I hear about skate parks, I always think of councillor Gibbons. Because he, over 20 years ago, would have had this on the table. And he had a great idea at the time, the old municipal pool that was in existence on the Markvich Road. He had a proposal that that would have been made a skate park. And it would have been, I suppose, money wasn't available at the time, but it certainly would have taken the minimal amount of money. We heard the young people talking about outdoor facilities and certainly this is a sport that's growing in popularity. And I do support the motion. And I think as councillor Gibbons has said, that we should look to see what the costing, to do a study on it, to see what it would cost and where we could put it. But I always feel that there was an opportunity missed, that the old municipal pool on the Markvich Road was, that wasn't taken on board at the time. Thank you.
Councillor O'Boyle.
Thank you, Chair. And just to support the motion and also councillor Grady, I remember the town pool. I prefer there to still be a pool, but it's still available there, you know, it's, I know it's kind of a busy road and that. But it's definitely something that's going to be coming up in the next couple of years. So I support the motion.
Okay, the CEO wants to come in here. Sorry, councillor Healy, if you want to say something, I'll let you in first.
Yeah, just in relation to this, I did raise it at the last time that this came up, that you mean an outdoor skate park. But could we have it that it could be used not just for skating, that could be used for bicycles, it could be used for wheelchairs? And that should mean broaden it out, that it can be used for multitudes of things. And I did also say at the time that if they were looking for a place, that there was an area in Calouni that we'd be willing to work with them. But we didn't hear out and back from them. Thanks.
Okay, CEO.
Thank you Cahill. Her report went to the Corporate Policy Group on Friday around the level of investment. And we have to be thankful to central government for it. Investment into outdoor recreation facilities, which is good for people's mental and physical wellbeing. I think we'll share that report with the members. I think we'll share that report with the members, all of you, because I think it's interesting to see how much we're on the hook for in relation to match-funded projects and the decisions, and very important decisions, that are becoming before the council over the next six to nine months, if we want to continue inward investment in relation to various projects. I'm quite happy to get a cost in for a preliminary design, but our teams have been working very hard on outdoor recreation, the town and village funded. And in essence, in summary, the local property tax, if it was to be increased, is already earmarked for 2023 and 2024. So, decisions will be coming before yourselves if you want further inward investment in looking at projects such as this. So, we'll share that with members, and we'll be bringing it as a report to the council meeting in March. Thanks.
Consul Walsh, John Mosher, would you like to come back in before we finish?
Yeah, thanks, Cahillock, and I note the comments for the CE. And I haven't seen that particular report. And just to note, the level of funding that is coming into the county, we were, for many years, starved of funding coming in for many, many projects, and that has turned on its head in recent years. And it's great to see the large amounts of projects that are being funded. I just want to, I suppose, just to wrap up, this project would not take an arm and a leg to complete an outdoor skateboard park. And there are funding streams in terms of Thor and Sports Capital. You know, it is important that we're not left behind, and I would ask that, I suppose, that preliminary piece be done, and we can, I suppose, take it from there then in relation to that. Thank you, Cahillock.
Okay, we can agree the motion and move on. Item twenty-four, Consul Fox.
Yeah, thanks, Chair, members. And yeah, just in relation to the Eastern Garavogue Bridge project. It's, look, it's gone on for so many years now, and it's important that we keep the pressure on. It's good to see progress being made. I want to thank Tom Brennan for the report.
Tom, it's twenty-four is the, that the housing section of this council, the repair and leasing scheme, sorry. Keep them notes, keep them notes for the next one.
Thanks. Sorry about that. Excuse me, Chair and members. Yeah, listen, the repair and lease scheme is a timely scheme, it's a timely motion as well, with the pent-up demand for housing, as we've seen in, you know, in the recent years throughout the pandemic. I think we have a huge opportunity here in Sligo to collaborate with the council and local builders and owners of derelict vacant properties. You know, there's lots of funds available. There are sixty thousand euros per unit available upfront for people who own properties per unit, you know, and there's a big opportunity there to engage with these people to address the chronic shortage of housing in Sligo. A great example is the example in Waterford. There's a very successful story down in Waterford. They've had over, what are the figures here? Give me one second. The application, there was over three hundred and fifty-two applications and a hundred and ten agreements signed. So, an overall total delivery of a hundred and twenty-two. So, we should follow their example. They're engaging with the people who own these properties. We have a lot of vacant pubs here in Sligo, and they're ideally, they're an ideal situation. You can make, you can break them down into individual units, and you can, you know, some of the, some of the developments in Waterford, there were five units in it, and the developers got three hundred euros, three hundred thousand euros for each property. So, it's, look, it makes sense at the bottom line, and it makes sense for the delivery of housing and the chronic shortage of housing here in Sligo at the moment. We have the highest rate of commercial units in the country, and I think it's an angle we should look at, and I think it's something that we can, this is the way we can deliver housing, one way of delivering housing here in our town centre. Thank you.
Consul Gilroy, you seconded.
Yeah, yeah, just, I'm just wondering, is that available throughout the county? Is it all areas of the county? It is, yeah, yeah, looking to support it, and it would be great to bring these houses back into use, because there's a lot of properties out there that are, and wherever we can help, we should be helping, not putting any obstacles in people's way. Thank you.
I'd also, anyone else want to come in? I'd also like to lend my support to the motion as well. I think it's, we all get calls about maybe derelict housing, and is there any funds there for doing them up or repairing them or bringing them back into a livable state? So, look, I'd support the motion too. I do understand that it has to be in areas of need throughout the county. But I do think that there is, every area is an area of need throughout the county at the moment, personally.
Cahillock, I'd like to fully support the motion and think it's very, very timely with the issue that we have with housing. But no more than other councillors, I have been contacted about it, and I feel there's a lack of awareness of what is available, and maybe it's something we should look at, doing some kind of an exercise again to inform people, because it is a wonderful scheme. It's a win-win for both the owner of the property and people who are on the housing list. Thank you.
Consul O'Boyle.
Chair, did we not do this a couple of years ago? I think we got one response back from homeowners.
That's a different thing.
But it's probably just going to be the same thing, you know. It's the homeowners that has to be interested in it.
Will I ask Jim to just comment to?
Yeah, look, I agree with the councillors. Look, it's been very poor uptake to date on this, and you can just see from the report. But again, we will be pushing this again, because again, as everybody said, it's getting the information out to people and letting them know that it's there. The rate has gone up, and it is trying to encourage people to take the opportunity there. The government supports it there, and we need to ensure that people actually use them.
Okay, Consul Fox, are you happy?
Yeah, I'm happy with that. I was surprised, just to bring up the issue within the report, I was surprised with the number seventeen people. There was no demand for property. You know, there's such a demand throughout the county at the moment, you know. And look, we need to liaise more with property owners and explain to them what's available to them.
And twenty-five, Consul Fox again. You were halfway through it.
Yeah, halfway done already. Thanks, Chair and members, yeah. Look, this is a vital project for Sligo. And it's gone on for years. It's gone on, you know, it's gone on for over forty years, to my knowledge. And it's a vital project for the county, County of Sligo. It's close by the hospital, Sligo University Hospital, the IT Sligo. And I think there's huge opportunities there with council-owned land there on the north side of it as well for the provision of housing while they are developing that bridge, you know. So, look, there's lots that could be done in conjunction with the building of the bridge. Huge opportunity for the eradication of homelessness, number one, social and affordable housing, number two. And the private sector will follow if the example is shown. An example has been shown already here in Sligo County Council with Harbour View and that, and great examples, and credit to all involved who have done, you know, great work in provision of housing already. And look, at these infrastructural projects, work in tandem, and it's important that we push forward here to provide, you know, another very, very serious issue is bed space for students. And it's known as bed space, the accommodation for students. And so, you know, there's a huge opportunity there. Accommodation for the people who are working, doctors and nurses who are working in the hospital. All of this can be dealt with as an overall project for the Eastern Garavogue Bridge and Approach Road Scheme. Look, it's great to see land acquisition is substantially complete. Hopefully, we can bring it to a final conclusion. And pointing, it's great to see the appointment of consultants in the third quarter of 2022, and that the scheme will be tender for construction in the third quarter of 2023. When I was running for election in the local elections in 2019, I made a promise to the people in North Sligo, and I made a promise to the people there in Colloony and Basidere that we'd be able to travel to and from North Sligo, and to and from North and South Sligo, and it was my promise to the people that during this term of this council, that the Eastern Bridge scheme would be commenced during this commitment. And it's great to see progress being made. And I'd like to thank everybody who, I'd like to acknowledge all the efforts of the people over the years who have, you know, who have worked hard on this project over the years, and I'm fully aware of the efforts that were made by our predecessors. And I want to pay great, great credit to them all who have worked hard, and hopefully we can get this, now is the time to do it. Let's get it done, and that's it.
Consul Clark, you seconded the motion.
Yeah, I just want to second the motion. It's a critical piece of infrastructure for the town of Sligo, and indeed it's going to transfer our town into a city. It's going to, you know, reduce all, it's the last piece of jigsaw that has to be completed as soon as possible to ensure that it will open up land for housing, which is critically wanted. And I think that Consul Fox is very timely with his motion, and I commend him for putting it down, and I'm supporting the motion wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Consul Catherine.
Thank you, Chair. Just briefly supporting the motion again, and as Consul Clark said, it's just the final piece of the jigsaw that the Sligo is waiting for to open us up completely, and it would be such a game changer for not just the town, but the entire county. Thank you.
Thank you. And look, we'd all support the motion. That motion is agreed. Okay, twenty-six, there's a number of councillors with twenty-six, including myself. Consul Clark, I'll let you.
Motion thirty, similar motion.
Okay, okay, we'll take both together, that's fine.
And Cahillock, could I amend thirty to say, to write to the minister with the agreement of the meeting here and to increase the percentage of the costumes from thirty percent to fifty percent?
Is that agreed? Okay, would you agree that? Right, Consul Clark.
I want to amend this motion to remove Sligo County Council and insert the Minister for Housing and the Department of Local Government and Heritage.
Is that agreed? Great.
This is a critical, it's probably the most important grant that Sligo County Council disperses to our citizens. It is serious help to people with disabilities and home care people that has to visit houses to assist people. But the fact of the matter is now that the cost of materials and labour has gone through the roof. I mean, eight thousand for windows and doors, or eight thousand to put on a roof is laughable now at this stage. If you had to build on a room and an en suite or a wet room onto a house, the cost of that now at the moment is between seventy and eighty thousand, and our maximum grant is thirty. And maybe Mr Malloy can comment on how many maximum grants the council has paid out in the last year. I don't think it would affect that many. And I know from talking to PJ Harkin and Michael Gookin that the maximum is thirty and eight, and that they, we would like as councillors to give them the freedom to be able to cross that up to a maximum of forty-five and thirty. I think that, you know, in Consul Milani's original motion, thirty percent would put us from thirty to thirty-nine, and that still wouldn't touch only fifty percent of the cost of putting on the roof. So, I think that our engineers should have the flexibility to award maybe a ninety percent grant to people to build on those wet rooms and those bedrooms that is needed. But it is an issue that we need to be addressed, because the people just can't afford to get the work done.
Okay, Consul Milani, I'm going to let you come in, because you have another motion there. And anybody come in then that's involved with the motion? Okay.
Yeah, well, I put down this motion after being contacted by a number of people who had got quotations and sent them into the council, and then had been awarded grant aid and gone back to the builder that had originally gave the court to discover that he was looking for an increase of between thirty and fifty percent. Now, I think, as Consul Clark has said, this is a hugely important grant aid, because it helps people to remain in their homes. It frees up spaces in nursing homes. And I think quality of housing for older people is very, very important. It helps them to maintain good health. And it's important that we give a grant that's capable of getting the job done. Thanks, Cahillock.
Consul Baker.
I'd just like to support and not fally on on everything that has been said, but I think in a lot of cases, the maximum will be only used on a few ones. A lot of the grants can be in between, so I don't think it will greatly affect the scheme and the bigger picture. And I'd just like to compliment all the staff that work so hard on trying to get these grants through and to keep up the good work, because it makes a huge difference to these people, and they're the people that struggled for many a year. And the least they deserve now is to have the comfort of their own home, if that's their wish. Thank you.
Consul Queenan.
Well, to be associated with all the previous comments, support the motion. The present eight thousand for all papers granted is fair too low, and the same with the thirty thousand, as you consider, when you share this motion. Just one clarity on if the department agrees to increase their allocation, does that mean we have to increase our allocation? No?
Okay, I think we have been doing so anyway. Consul Mulve.
Yeah, thanks, Cahillock, and looking, supporting the motion as well. You know, unfortunately, we're all too well aware, as yourself, that you're in the building trade, that the price increases. And, you know, when you take one instance, likes of steel has gone up two hundred percent, everything across the board. I've spoken to builders, merchants, who, number one, there's a scarce to get material, and then when you do get it, it's literally a case you have to pay the price. There's, you know, there's so many countries, I suppose, even the likes of America, that are buying up timber literally before it's cut down, and it's leaving a huge knock-on effect to countries and counties such as Sligo, where there are an awful lot of people that are in on data. And I welcome and want to thank the staff, Kate Farlow, and all the staff down there that are dealing with these application forms. It's a tedious process, but people are so delighted when they get offered a grant that they're able to do the work and stay in their own home. But unfortunately, the construction sector is under serious pressure, and with materials going up, it has to be addressed, because you can get minimal work done now. The cost of living has gone very high, and building materials are being affected, so I fully support the motion.
Consul Gilroy.
Yes, again, a very timely motion. Well done to those who brought it forward. The pricing thing is a huge thing. I was talking to a contractor only last week who said that, in general, that in the last twelve to eighteen months, sixty thousand is the additional cost of building a one-off house. He gave me examples that plywood or the, what do you call the cheaper version of plywood, had gone from eighteen euros a sheet to forty-eight euros a sheet. Like, that's massive. It's what, fifty-two now? Yeah. P I R insulation, worldwide shortage of it. Most people are just buy it no matter what the price is, and these are the realities that people are living on the ground. There was a worldwide shortage, partly due to Covid, partly due to supply issues. But it's now, most builders, providers have it sold before it comes in the door. You can't just run down to BMG or Buckley's or Rogers or anyone else and look for a couple of sheets, because it just ain't there. It's gone the minute it comes in the door. And that's the reality that we're living in. Eight thousand, especially the eight thousand for the older people, like maybe a sliding scale, but if you've got somebody in their eighties and you're trying to get them to do a bit of work, or their family are trying to get them to do a bit of work, eight thousand will do nothing. It'll hardly get somebody in the door. And that has to, that has to change definitely, because, you know, do we have to wait until they fall and break their hip and then they can claim for the disability one? Now, you know, it just is crazy. So, I think we have to, we have to just make it that the older people's grant definitely should be higher. Thank you.
Consul O'Grady.
Just briefly, Cahillock, I want to compliment the councillors who put this forward. I think it's a very timely motion, and certainly it's very, it's one of the most important things that we do as a council. If you speak to any older person and ask them where do they want to be, regardless of what their home is, they'll tell you home first. And anything that we can do to support a wonderful, a golden generation who built up our country, anything that we can do to support them and let them have their wish of staying at home, that it should be done. So, I fully support that there is nationally a look at the increase in funding, and I'm aware. And I'm aware that we will have to match funding that increase. So that all comes into then estimates time in, in taking the responsibility at estimates time of voting for it. There's no point in talking here about increasing it if we don't support the estimate when it comes before us. Thank you.
Constable Catherine.
I'd just like to support the motion. Thank you.
Look, I, I, I'd want to support. I was one of the councillors putting this motion as well. Uh, as we discussed earlier, this is the only grant available, um, to do any work on houses. We discussed it's for elderly people, for people with disabilities, for people with extra needs. Very, very important. Um, the cost of, of, uh, any building and construction now is just going to different level of figures altogether, different scale at the moment. Uh, any contractors now, you know, they will only hold a quote for three months. And I think that's even pushing it at the moment. Um, I know people who have started jobs that the contractor has come back to them because his subcontractors have come back to him, uh, increasing costs. And sixty thousand, uh, Constable Gilroy, you mentioned that there. That's conservative at the moment. And depending on, 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 on the size of the building that you're doing. And we've talked about materials, but labour costs are increasing all the time as well because, because the, the, the price of diesel has increased, the cost of living is increasing. So labour costs are increasing as well. I think this is, it, this is, is an extremely important motion at the moment. The uptake on this, and I think Jim Ull verify these grants around this county and the staff that are working on them, uh, Kate Barlow, Ronan, PJ, Michael, Hillary, they will tell you as well, you know, that the uptake on this all over the county is massive. It is huge. And so it's very important that we, we write to, to the relevant departments and, and that we keep writing to the relevant department to try and have this supported. And I do also think this is a motion that could go to other councils and should go to other councils. Because I think we need the support of all, because this is for, at department levels, this should go to other councils. And it, it, the importance of it is so great, to be honest. And I don't know, Jim, do you want to make any comments?
Just going to add there, the information that Constable Clark's looking on the, the uptake of the grant and the number of maximum grants. Look, we'll, we'll amass that and we'll get it shared with all the councillors after, after the meeting. But again, again, the costs are, are rocketing as everybody said. And, you know, the, the grant is becoming outdated then because it doesn't match the costs.
And, and what, and what we do know about increasing costs, it might level off, it might stop, but it won't come down again. I think we all know that. Okay, we can agree the motion and move on. Uh, twenty-seven, is that deferred Constable Healy? Uh, twenty-eight, Constable Healy?
Yeah.
Seconder.
Um, listen, uh, I got the report and I'm delighted to see that, um, under reactive travel, that something is going to be done. Our Gaird and Access Cross the Enford, it was back there in two thousand nineteen where we seen Larry turned over. Lucky enough, there was no one involved or no one was hurt. Uh, but as it says, the campaign ran out there in Kloonie and we want to see something happening. I'm delighted to see that T I I have, have taken on board, uh, the concerns that we have in Kloonie. And also we've sent in a survey that we carried ourselves, the group carried out themselves on the amount of people that use the road. And T I I also have that. So as it says, I'm welcoming this news. This is the, there's a number of phases to be searched in this. And as it says, uh, there'll be public consultation as well with, uh, people in the area. So, um, it's good news for Kloonie and hopefully that this will address it once and for all, a safe access across the Enford. Thank you.
Constable Gibbons, do you want to come in to support?
I just second the motion. Thanks for that.
Okay, that motion is agreed. Okay, twenty-nine, Constable Healy. Seconder, Constable Gibbons.
I want to thank the reports as well. Listen, the most important things is these text alerts. Uh, having set one up in Baligali, Ballantaur and Sui, we've seen firsthand there when that text alert was set up in that area, what it means to the people, a little bit of more security. I know it's, uh, the Joint Police and Committee had, had it on their agenda for the local authorities to look at it. I think that this is, this can be a game changer for areas. Simple fact is, over the last two years, a lot of the, uh, text alerts that's in the areas haven't been working because, uh, because of that, doesn't, uh, the whole area has been closed down. But this is a vital service for people that lives in rural areas and we know that now more than ever. Uh, a vital service like this to have, and I think that we should be pushing it. I think that this is an opportunity as well for the Minister for Justice to be on board with this and try and get more funding down to local authorities to make sure that this happens. For the simple reason is, if you have a text alert in your area and it's working well, that means that we have eyes on people that's in the areas that shouldn't be in the areas. That goes direct to the Gairs. The Gairs notify then areas. We'll see if there was a break-in in Ballantaur. You get on your phone, you say, look, a care left our scene, a white care open left the scene. That goes to the local guard. The guard analysis that and breaks that down and says, right, there's need for a text alert. That text alert then is sent out to Ballantaur, Baligali and Sui. So everyone in that area of the over four hundred people that's registered in that, them four hundred people have access straight away that there's a care in your area, be on the lookout for it. That is vital evidence for the Gairs that they know exactly where that travel, care is travelling to. But also with the founder person that's in their home saying, look, now I know there's somebody round. I can contact the doctor and say, look, there's a care woman around the area. Also, it gives an indication to the next door neighbour, I must go down now and check on that woman, make sure everything's all right. So this is a vital service. And I think that local authorities, I know in Manon and them, and as it says, but the value of the schemes and the amount of money you have to pay into ten euro a year for the, to, for the scheme in, uh, in Ballantaur. Ten euro, that's all you pay for the full year. It's value for money. And I think insurance companies should be coming in on it as well. And, and helping the lo- these local groups, this, to fund them as well in some way. Because if you, you think of it this way, if you have this ticked, this box ticked for an insurance company, it brings down the value of the insurance as well. So there's added bonuses here. And as well as that, this text alert is not being a voice of the, it's not to be there that we don't need Gairda. It's assist the Gaird, but also as well as that, to give people that level of comfort at the need in their homes. And we've seen with all the break-ins around the place, now more than ever. I, I'd be pushing and asking people to join up and get a text alert in your area. I've been contacted by a good few groups now since a lot of break-ins, looking for a text alert to be set up in their areas. And we'll be looking into them over the next number of weeks. But there, this is an opportunity for everyone. Everyone has a ch- chance here now to play their part and make sure that if they see something, put it in. And it does ma- matter how stupid you think it is. It costs nothing to send that text or to make that call. But that could be the piece of a jigsaw that the Gairde Shikana need when they come to solving a, a break-in or anything else. Thank you.
Okay, Constable Gibbons, okay, yours is supporting. Thank you.
As the seconder of the motion, uh, I'd have to support everything that my colleague says. One thing I would say in relation to text alert, and everybody has a duty to assist the guard, he to, um, and to prevent crime. And that's where text alert comes in. As well as that, it gives in rural areas, the likes of people living in very isolated areas or elderly people or people with disabilities, it gives them that much more peace of mind. So that's the support of motion. Thanks very much.
Constable Boyle.
Thank you Chair. Definitely to support the motion and trying to get as many people involved as possible, as Constable Healy says. With the amount of recent break-ins, any bit of information could be helpful. So support this and get it out in the community.
Constable Catherine.
Um, yeah, just to support the motion, just, um, as a member of the J P C as well, it, it just came up for discussion. Um, and just to say that, uh, to pay a compliment to Vanessa Clark and Wuchinatir, who's done a huge amount of work in this over the last few years as well. And we actually out in North Sligo have a really good text alert scheme going, but I know that a lot of communities are involved with the B Alert. And we very, very regularly get, uh, get texts and updates and that is shared. So it is actually very successful at the minute. Um, I would hope that it wouldn't be changed too much because, um, you know, every, it does what it says in the tin. Everybody gets a text to their phone. And, uh, I, I think introducing apps or any other new technology, um, I would be wary of it because I know that some people just, um, wouldn't use it. So and the service might be lost. So I think the way it is at the minute, I think it's very, uh, successful, particularly out in, in North Sligo. So I'd, I would hope that that system would be continued, um, throughout the county. Thank you.
Constable Mulve.
Yeah, thanks Cahill. Look, and just in support of the motion, I'm also, um, involved with the, the one in Ballymore. And I have to say, you know, thankfully, there aren't a huge number of texts coming. But when they come, it's, it's great evidence of how vital a service it is. You know, when there is a suspicious vehicle in an area, that people can be on the alert. Because, um, you know, unfortunately, uh, the burglars and the criminals are looking for opportunities out in the rural areas and every, I suppose avenue we can use to let them know that they're being watched and that the people are working with and Gairde Shikana. And as a member of the J P C, I think certainly is something I welcome and having seen how successful it is. And to concur with what Constable Catherine has said, the vital work that Vanessa Clark has played in her role and mentioned at Chair on this is, uh, you know, has to be applauded. But hopefully with the COVID restrictions easing now, she will be able to get out into areas and meet people and community groups and get them up and running. That we have a widespread use of the service in our county. And let it be known that if there are criminal activities being planned or being orchestrated, that the community are watching them and will report the issues to the Gairde.
Constable Baker.
Yeah, I think it's more vital now than ever because as communities, we have got used of delivery vans and that. A lot of people are buying online. And when, when you get the alert then that there is a suspicious vehicle, see, sometimes you'll pass no heed because you only think they're dropping off parcels. So that be, can be, uh, figured now in an area who to attack or whatever. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to, and my support to the motion as well. I'm, I'm involved in a number of, of text alert groups. And I think that and, and, and social media work very well, um, when there's, when there's a, a, a problem in an area. But I, I, I'd support this call and, and support the motion as well.
And one to finish off with, the most important thing about the text alert is that the Gairs make the call compared to, uh, somebody else putting up, we'll see on, as you says yourself, putting something up on Facebook. Does mean because Tales goes on to that. You make your call to the Gairs. The Gairs look at it and they assess if they need to send out a text or not. Another thing that's causing a lot of people, uh, on, that have the text alerts set up in the areas is that they're being charged even if a text doesn't go out. So, I mean, it's, that could be eaten into the money as well. So, I mean, that's why the local authorities need to be coming on board here more. And I think it's, it's an opportunity where the Minister of Justice should be funding, uh, some sort of a scheme here to help along with this. I know that you can get tax rebits and things like that, but a little bit more help and support would be great. And I want to thank, as, as everyone else says, Vanessa Clark for the great work she did. But I also want to thank the community gears that are out there working with us as well and the importance that they play in, in, in areas. Because the most important thing is that when you send a text, that's who's going to follow you up. And we need to make sure that the Gairde Shikana are there, they have the resources and they're there in their numbers when these things happen too. Thank you.
Okay, agreed the motion. Uh, thirty-one, Constable Boyle.
Thank you Chair. Um, I'm calling on the government to take into consideration those women who were sent to England and further to give birth and sent home without babies or without knowledge of what happened to their babies or even told they never had babies. And then some women who were sent home to force, or forcibly having to give their children into adoption agencies. And again, never told whereabouts due to false birth certs. Um, in nineteen sixty alone, the state brought back over one hundred children, yet the government has given no recognition or redress to mothers in this situation. I would also ask that the government plea, or not, kind of sensibly provide some sort of help between diocese and state for people to try and get birth certs. As in the case of my own father, my father's birth cert still hasn't been found, even though we know where he was born, so I was trying to get it. And the links between Ireland and England, all kind of back in the fifty, sixties and seventies when this was happening, like wildfire. It was done through your diocese, your local parish priest. So these records are there. It's just a matter of the state trying to get some helper, some force or decent contact between the church and the state to release the information. So I'd be hoping for support on this motion please.
Constable O'Grady.
I fully support the motion and thank Constable Boyle for keeping those issues on the table over a long period of time. Uh, and certainly, uh, the connection between parish and state is key in solving the many issues that people, as Constable Boyle has outlined, people have, have had issues in getting their, their birth certs. So again, I want to acknowledge Constable Boyle's input in many, many, uh, in, uh, over the years in, in solving and helping. And I know of many people that he has helped, um, who has had problems uh, trying to find their birth mother or whatever. So I fully, wholeheartedly support this very timely motion.
Constable Maguire.
Um, thank you Cahill. Look, um, I think Constable O'Grady said everything I wanted to say there. Wholeheartedly support the motion and concur that Constable O'Grady has done phenomenal work in this area and has kept it on the agenda. Um, and the right, I think no one's identity is very basic human right, which should be available to everybody. Thank you.
Constable Catherine.
Uh, yes, I'd just like to support the motion and not repeat what has been said, but just, um, to, to acknowledge the work that, that Constable Boyle has done on this, to keep it on the agenda. Um, and I know from, from working with, in the past with, with birth mothers, the trauma that is still out there, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years goes through, goes all through their lives, the mothers as well as children. So, um, it's important that we keep all this on the agenda so, so that people, um, get what they deserve and the first thing that, that the most important thing is, is the right to, to find out who they actually are and the right to their birth certificate.
I'd also like to, uh, support the motion and, and to compliment you. Sorry, don't let you in first.
Yes, thanks Cahill. Um, yeah, fully support the motion as well. Um, just maybe think we need to start, um, thinking a bit wider. We have a lot of children in this country who are adopted from Romania, China, countries all over Eastern Europe. Um, and I don't know if they all have access to their birth rights and their, their birth certs as well. And it is something that we should include in it. I don't think anyone should be left behind. Those people are now, you know, some of them are, are, are well into their twenties and thirties from when that started in this country back in the late eighties and early nineties. Um, and I think it'd be important that we don't forget them either. They're, 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 every bit is entitled to get their birth certs, even though they're, um, um, genetically their line may not be Irish, but they're Irish people and Irish citizens now. And we should support them in whatever they wish to do. Thank you.
Uh, Constable Healy.
Just want to support it and I want to thank, uh, Constable Boyle for the great work that he has done on this over a long number of years and his father before that as well. Um, it's a very important thing. I know a lot of pe- kids that are adopted. It's a very important piece of information, this, their birth cert. It gives them that little bit of hope that they know exactly who the mum and dad was. And if they haven't got it, if they're going through life, wondering where, who was he, where was he born? And it's, it's unbelievable what, how, what effect a small bit of paper like that can mean to a person who feels, does mean where am I situated in life? Where, does mean where was, where did it start? Who was my mum? Who was my dad? They're vital bits of information for any child that's adopted. And does mean we should be doing everything in our, that we can in our powers to make sure that this happens. Because, I mean, these children were the last, were the ones that were forgotten about. And, I mean, we have a lot to answer as well in this state for the way that these children were, were, uh, what happened to them. And I think the most important thing we can do, at least do, is make sure that they have that little bit of evidence that it means that they have some, they know who their mum and dad is. It's up to themselves then on what, what, uh, what course they want to take and finding their parents. But, I mean, just to have that, it's a vital, important thing. And for families that does have kids that are adopted, does mean it's an important thing if you do have a child that's adopted, does mean that they know their background and does mean they know that they're loved and everything else. So it's, it's a major thing to a child, uh, to know exactly where my mum or where my dad is. Thank you.
Constable Gibbons.
I want to support the motion and I would have to say in relation, I do know the work that Constable Boyle has put into us in his daddy form. And in fairness, the whole Boyle family, um, Gina's brother and his two sisters and mum has been very much involved in this. But the one thing that has always gone over my head in relation to the whole birth cert saga, every child has a right to a birth cert. That belongs to the child. That's the, that's the identification. It's a requirement on the state to provide every child with that. And yet that hasn't happened in a lot of cases. And we're the driver. I know that over the years, there was manipulation that was used there by different outside bodies and whatever else on the history of adoptions in this country. But realistically, that's, the saga has been recognised. But realistically, that's, the saga has been recognized over the last number of years, but it's still not been addressed 100%. Like, nobody has a right to turn around and say to a child, you don't have a birth cert or here's a different birth cert that's made up for you. It belongs to the child. That's exactly, it is their right. I mean to say, at the end of the day, it's, it's the main performing proof that they even exist in the world. That's that aspect of it. And then as well as that other aspect that nobody's actually dealing with, I haven't heard being mentioned, what happens in a family where there's maybe a nilness that's hereditary comes down the line? So when that child was handed over maybe to somebody, that information isn't even given with them. That birth cert entitles that child to that information because at least they know where it came from. But look, this is to support the motion, I do support the motion 100%. I've always known the struggle that families like the Boyle family has had over these days, years and it's kind of something that no family should have to go through. But it is, it's, it's a black, it's a blight nearly on our society, on our history. That's where it is. But it is something that needs to be overturned and needs to be dealt with sooner rather than later.
Consular Fox.
Yes, I just want to support this motion and I want to pay a great tribute to the Boyle family and to Gino's father, who has done so much work over the years in, in the town of Sligo. And I want to pay a great tribute to the family. I'm fully aware of, of, of the efforts that they, that they have made over the years and they have to be, they have to be commended. And look, it's a, it's a, it's, 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 it's a very important issue for, for an individual to know their, their, their birth, you know, their birth rights. And it's, 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 it's important that we acknowledge that. Every life is of equal value and, you know, people should, should, you know, community should help and work where they can as well on this. And like the, the great example that has been shown by the Boyle family over the years. So I want to make, make sure that that's acknowledged. Thank you.
Consular Walsh.
I just want to support the motion and thank, and I said already, and thank Consular Boyle for his work, ongoing work on this issue. Thank you.
I'd also like to support the motion and again to compliment you, Consular Boyle, and your family and your father before you and the work that you've done in this area. And I know it's an issue that's, that's very close to your heart and well done for keeping it, for always keeping it on the agenda and always keep it on the agenda, keep it that way. So well done.
Just to come back in, Chair, I'd like to thank everybody for their support and just like a small number is, there's 96,000 people in Ireland without a birth cert, you know, and that number could be greater because people aren't really, and a lot of people don't really know their own background yet. And as Consular Gibbons had said about medical history, I'm a firm believer that if my father was given his own medical history, he'd still be alive because it's a relative realness around my father's family, his grandfather and great-grandfather before him all passed away with sudden eye death syndrome. So it's just one of those things that we have to get on with, but if we can make a change somewhere, it might save somebody else from something like that happening.
Well done. And thirty-two again, Consular Boyle.
Yeah, just with the report I got, it says they're waiting on a review from the Gairde. So let me just defer this to next month.
Thirty-three, Consular Boyle.
Yeah, I'll take you Chair. It was disappointing and indeed offensive that despite national prioritization and huge efforts by the public to heighten the scale of violence against women and children, despite evidence of the cost to survivors, their families, communities and state, that the government again has failed to commit a coherent response in the 2022 budget. While TOSA has been given an increase in its allocation, there is no specified allocation for gender-based violence. This means domestic violence services and rape crisis centers will now have to compete against each other for resources and against TOSA's other priorities, which includes its own corporate development. And I think this is just something that has been on the agenda. I know the motion is kind of a wee bit different with specifics, but I know other councillors, Consular O'Grady or Consular Maguire and Consular Castley and other councillors had motions like this and including myself, but I just feel that in the last couple of years, numbers have been at a dramatic rate, 50% increase since in 2022 in cases like this. And I just moved on to the next one, it's about cyberfleshing. There's currently no legislation regarding cyberfleshing and it's not a criminal act. And women who are targeted have little control over the content to receive, whether that's unsolicited pictures or videos. And during recent Zoom meetings, you can just mention the Ashley Murphy vigil, for instance, where males interrupted and started exposing themselves and really there's nothing that can be done. This is a sexual harassment blind spot that's been ignored unfortunately and being tolerated. So that's, I think the need for specific laws around cyberfleshing has to be introduced. I also feel there's a need for education and education about healthy and toxic relationships in Ireland. We need to introduce domestic violence education into schools. It would be extremely beneficial for this generation to be taught about domestic violence, especially different types of abuse. And if it's taught in schools, all the better. In Ireland, since 1960, or 1996, 244 women have been murdered or gone missing and it's become increasingly unsafe in recent years. Some women are now living in fear at the murder of a woman in broad daylight and they have no way of defending themselves. When you see the pepper spray is illegal under section nine of the Fire, Arms and Offense, Offensive Weapons Act 1990, how is a woman five foot two supposed to defend themselves against a man six foot five anyway like that? So I, I am calling for the legalization of pepper spray and my opinion will be very beneficial. Thank you.
Sir Bree, do you want to comment?
I fully support the motion as proposed by Consular Boyle. Safe Ireland, the umbrella group for domestic violence support groups has pointed out that while the government continuously name checked, domestic violence is a priority, this hasn't been backed up by the resources that are required. The number of new victims who come forward during the lockdown is indicative of the depth of hidden abuse and trauma in this country. Women's Aid said that they've been in contact with women who have been attacked with weapons and fists, who were being verbally abused, controlled and monitored at all times of the day by abusive partners. And in this context, Cahilluck, I think it's clear that the adequate funding and resources for services for victims of domestic violence must be allocated by government so as to ensure the services can meet current and growing demands. However, as I've said before, apart from government funding for domestic violence support groups, we need to ask ourselves, why are there so many victims? What type of society tolerates the level of abuse and violence, particularly against women, that appears to be acceptable in Ireland today? Now more than ever before, there's a need for, for a national conversation, particularly among men in regard to domestic violence and sexual violence and the steps that must be taken to prevent it. I formally second the motion there.
Consular Maguire.
Thank you, Cahilluck. I want to support the motion. This is a topic that has come up several times and obviously most recently in the chamber after the tragic death of Ashley Murphy. And I think we have all indicated our support for it and I want to continue that. Justice Minister Mackinty has indicated that she intends to make reforms in this regard. And I really hope that we will see that on the ground, in particular in relation to agencies such as DIVAS, who provide very necessary and important supports for women who are left in a situation where they have to seek help to leave their home and to find them somewhere safe to stay.
Is that agreed? That motion is agreed? Agreed. Thirty-four, Consular Bree.
Cahilluck, the recent RTE television series Crime and Confessions examined three of the most prominent miscarriages of justice cases facilitated by the Irish establishment in the 1970s and 1980s. It highlighted the shocking behavior of a significant number of rogue Gairde known as the Heavy Gang who acted outside the law by forcing false confessions from innocent people. The outrageous treatment of Joanne Hayes and her family was certainly exposed with allegations of guard brutality, forced confessions and fabricated statements. Joanne Hayes was arrested and charged with the murder of a baby known as Baby John, found washed up on White Strand, Carrasadeen with 28 stab wounds. Joanne told the Gairde that when her own baby died during childbirth, she secretly buried the infant on the family farm. Following hours of interrogation by detectives, she and four members of her family signed statements confessing to a role in the death of the baby found at Carrasadeen. However, when forensic tests eventually revealed that Joanne Hayes couldn't have been the mother of the Carrasadeen baby, all the charges were dropped. The fundamental question here is how five people, five different people, at the same time and in the same building, made five effectively dovetailing statements confessing to a crime that science said they couldn't have committed? The Salins train robbery was another case where four innocent men, Nicky Kelly, Oscar Brehnoch, John Fitzpatrick and Brian McNally, were brutally beaten in the Bridewell Garda station and forced to sign concocted statements confessing to the robbery of the train. And when they complained about the brutality in court, the Gairde suggested that they had inflicted the injuries on each other. And when Oscar Brehnoch complained, the Gairde accused him of beating himself up. However, when the medical evidence of the injuries sustained clearly showed that this was an impossibility. And on Cahilluck, there were calls back as far as 1990, 1977 from Amnesty International for the then government to hold an independent inquiry into this maltreatment carried out systematically by Gairde, who appeared to specialize in the use of oppressive methods in extracting statements from suspects. However, the government did nothing and 45 years on, these men are still suffering and want to see outstanding questions answered by the state. The Unalinski case and the shocking treatment of Dick Donnelly, Martin Kerrigan and Martin Conme, again highlighted the sinister and shocking behavior of the Heavy Gang. And the outcome was the jailing of innocent men, a community divided and the death of Martin Kerrigan on the Dublin mountains. So Cahilluck, the after effects of these cases have been devastating for all the victims and their families. And at this stage, I think it's important that there be a full investigation of the activities of all the members of the Heavy Gang. And indeed, last week, retired judge, Mr Pat McCarthay said that the abuses that occurred in the Salins train robbery case and in many others were facilitated by the attitude of the special criminal court. He said the model of the non-jury court had never fitted a robust system of criminal law and that had failed to scrutinize the evidence presented and the means by which it was obtained. He said the Gairde and the state need to come clean about what happened in these and other cases in a full examination of their role and those who directed them. The innocent people who brutalized, who were brutalized and forced to sign false confessions are calling for a public inquiry as they believe that the judiciary and the state have questions to answer. And I therefore propose that Sligo County Council commends RTE on its recent Crime and Confessions television series. And further, the council calls for a full, full public inquiry into the miscarriages of justice outlined in the series. I formally move the motion. I would ask members to support.
Consular Boyle, you second.
Thank you, Chair, just in supporting Consular Bree's motion. There's not much more I can add. He has everything up to that, so fully support it.
Okay, the motion is agreed? Yes, Consular Castley.
I'd like to support the motion too. And, you know, it was a culture of Irish society at the time. I mean, as Consular Bree has rightly outlined, the status quo bill here, these are the men that were sent out to tackle the activities of the IRA, get confessions. And they were used for every high profile by the government at the time and by the DPP at the time to secure convictions, to tick the box, to get people convicted of these crimes that were innocent of. And I'm not quite sure whether an inquiry will uncover everything that needs to be uncovered by the Irish state that happened, especially to the Hayes family. I remember my mother watching that and I remember tears coming down her face, what was done to women at that time. It was a culture of the bully boy antics of the Irish state and especially men towards women at that time. And I certainly support the motion. It reminds me of a film that I watched recently, A Few Good Men, starring Tom Cruise, Jack Nixon and Demi Moore, where two soldiers was accused of murdering another soldier. And there were quits on the grounds that they were told to do that by their political masters and their, and their captain and the superintendent in charge. And in this case, there's a bit about that in it as well, where this, this was policy, state policy at the time, which was shameful. Thanks, Jelena.
Okay.
Consular Clark was saying, I'm 100% in support of the motion and I'm sure everybody around this table of my age group would even remember, I remember the worst thing that any youngster could get, even in this town, was into any sort of petty trouble. Because once they were recognized that they were in trouble and depending on the family that they came from or where they came from, they were targeted for every other bit of crime that happened. And I know one lad who was raised in the Nazaros and Sligo, he got into a wee bit of trouble and he had to spend the best part of his life in England because every time that a shop was broke into or something was stolen or whatever else, that lad was blamed on it and he was dragged in and he was looking at prison. And like that, the heavy hand of the law to get a confession out of him. And that was acceptable at the time, which is wrong. And I think everybody that played a part, not just in this case, this case that the Consular Bree's brought, but every bit of misjudgment that was out there by the people that was there to protect them and forcing confessions, these people all need to be brought to justice and all of this needs to be highlighted. And this RTE program, I think, is only the tip of the iceberg of what's going to come out yet in relation to what happened. And we do know even watching that program, one of the ministers of the day turned around and says, well, we haven't got a confession and it didn't matter what type of leak they used. And that is the full support behind it. Thanks very much.
Consular Baker.
Yeah, I think the most harrowing thing was especially in the Joanna Hayes when the inquiry was, I don't think there was one woman on it. But what she had to go through when that inquiry was unreal and morally wrong. So, thank you.
I think we all support the motion, we agree the motion. Okay, thirty-five, Consular Bree.
Cahilluck, the current housing crisis is causing huge distress, impacting negatively on mental health, causing anxiety and despair to people in, in communities across the country. And here in Sligo, there are more than 1,300 households on the council's housing waiting list, along with many more households who were ineligible for local authority housing, who are paying high rents to private landlords and who cannot find affordable housing to purchase. However, I think what's really of concern is the fact that more and more people are becoming homeless because they cannot afford increased rents or because landlords are taking advantage of rising house prices and serving notices to quit on their tenants. As some of these people may be fortunate enough to have extended family who provide them with shelter. However, now more than ever before, we have people in despair and desperate who find themselves homeless through no fault of their own and who are left with no alternative to approach the council seeking emergency accommodation. And I have to say that I don't envy the council's housing staff who have to cope on a day-to-day basis with the growing number of emergency cases. And I do wish to thank the Director of Services for, for his report. We are fortunate in Sligo to have the Maryville, Shalimar and Ballytivon hostels and I wish to pay tribute to the workers involved in these shelters. And I note from the report that the council doesn't take responsibility for refuges for women and children and I understand that DIVAS continues to provide that service. The temporary accommodation for homeless families provided by approved housing bodies is certainly necessary and I welcome the news that an additional family unit will be provided this year. However, I believe that more than one additional unit is required. And I note that the council is also considering the possibility of a sanitary welfare and day service being provided for rough sleepers and long-term homeless. And, you know, given the fact that most rough sleepers won't use hostels, I believe that such a day service would be welcomed and would be of significant benefit to them. Unfortunately, Cahilluck, there's not much light at the end of the tunnel for homeless people in Ireland today and that's due to the failure of central government. And I think it's a shocking indictment of this government and the previous administrations. I, I wish to thank the, the director for his report. Thank you, Chair.
Consular Boyle, you second.
Thank you, Chair, just to support the motion. I also think that sanitary and welfare day service would be very good for people in Sligo, but also just on the Housing First Initiative. I, I know it's hard to get one-bedroom accommodations for that, but I think there needs to be an increase in trying to get them. There are a lot of people that are on the street that could do with these services as well, so just to support the motion. Thank you.
Consular Fox.
Thank you, Chair and members, yeah. Look, I want to support this motion. It's a timely motion, it's, it's, what I've noticed in recent times, it's becoming more visible on our streets here in Sligo. And so we need to address this issue, we need to prioritize homelessness and we need to address homeless, we need to do more to eradicate homelessness. And to listen to Consular Bree there with his very informative descriptions of what the alternatives that can be, the alternative arrangements that can be made for people who are homeless. And we need to, we need to adopt new ways to address this issue and I want to support the motion. Thanks.
Consular O'Grady.
I fully support the motion.
Actually, I fully support the motion. And I think the idea of the council promoting a day, day centre for people who have housing needs, I suppose in collaboration with other groups, that people could have their daily needs attended to and maybe also get a hot meal. And if they had any medical needs, that that could be assessed. I think that would be a wonderful progression in the meantime, while we're waiting to get all the people that we have housed and looked, people that are homeless. Thank you.
I'd also like to show my support to the motion. I think it's an extremely timely motion at the moment. And I think we can agree the motion. Agreed. Okay, thirty-six, Constable Bree again.
Cahill, look, last year this council had numerous meetings with officials of the National Transport Authority in regard to bus services in the town and across the county. During these meetings, we particularly highlighted the lack of a town bus service to areas such as Mahoraboi, Tracy Avenue, Oakfield, Caltra and the Carrow Retail Park. The National Transport Authority responded positively and brought forward proposals for a new S3 town bus service. And it was clear that the proposed new S3 service, in addition to minor tweaking of the existing S1 and S2 services, would resolve most, if not all, of the outstanding shortcomings in the town bus service. Indeed, we were all, I think, very impressed by the level of data collected by the NTA officials who developed the proposal for the new S3 route. And it was obvious they had to put a significant, significant amount of effort and work into drafting their proposals. And it was clear that they listened intently to what we as elected representatives had to say about the need to improve the service. However, we were also advised that the new service wouldn't go ahead unless sufficient government funding was provided to the National Transport Authority to help subsidise the cost of the service. And this is now, you know, causing concern because there is a feeling or a belief that the government may not provide the necessary funding to allow the new service to proceed. And I'm therefore proposing that we call on the government and the Minister for the Environment, Climate, Communications and Transport to allocate the necessary funding to the National Transport Authority so as to allow for the introduction of the new S3 bus service in Sligo town. I firmly move the motion. Cahill, I'd ask members to support it.
Constable O'Boyle.
Thank you, Chair. I'd be brief. And in supporting what Constable Bree says, one of the issues we always seem to have, and it's always nearly on one of the meetings, is about climate change. We can't be serious about climate change if we're not going to invest in public transport. So I'd be supporting this motion.
Constable Fox.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Just to support the motion, it's a timely motion as we come out with the pandemic. It's people are reliant on public transportation, especially in rural-based communities. I have attended many of those NTA meetings virtually and liaised on those meetings. There's many scheduled bus services that have been cancelled, so they should be reinstated. And I know that out in Coleragh here, there's one particular service that brings people to or from the urban areas, to the nightlife economy. People need these, and I believe they need it more in rural areas. Because people rely more on it in rural areas. And the service should be provided throughout the county and our rural areas. And I know that in North Sligo, there are many areas that need to be, that the services need to be reinstated. And they need to be reinstated now. And the money should be allocated and rightly so for this vital service in rural-based communities. Thanks.
Constable O'Grady.
I fully support the motion and seeking funding for the S3, but I'm not convinced that the NTA are pushing it as, as, as much as, as they should be. I can't understand that they can't, while they're waiting on funding, that they can't reconfigure at the S2. Like, it's just beyond, it's beyond comprehension that a group of people couldn't sit down when you haven't the funding to do A, that you can't reconfigure your service. So I fully support the motion and, and I'm anxious that we soon should be due a meeting with the NTA as well. So, and I'm anxious that that won't fall between the stools, that we keep that correspondence or that communication with them.
Thanks, Constable O'Grady. Can we agree the motion? Agreed. And thirty-seven is my own motion. And I put this motion, I put this motion forward due to the number of constituency constituents who have been contacting me, and I'm sure you're all the same, over the last number of months with the backlog in passport applications. And I put this motion down calling for, for extra staff to help with the, with the backlog of applications. There were over a hundred and thirty-seven thousand passports applied for in January. And they're estimating that over one and a half million would be applied for throughout the year. The restrictions are lifting, as we know. People want now, are thinking about going on foreign holidays. They also want to visit loved ones that they may not have seen for a number of years. Emergency passport required for, 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 I suppose, more important issues. Most online renewals are quick if there isn't a problem with them. If they need backup documents, then you're running into huge problems. Right now, a straightforward online renewal can take up to ten days if it's straightforward. A child's renewal can take up to fifteen days. And it can be up to forty days for a first-time passport. There's huge issues with the first-time passports. Some are caught in the system for three to six months. People are very frustrated with this. And I know since I put down this motion, there has been a promise of extra help. There has been a promise of later opening hours, but it's impossible to contact the passport office. I think we all know that as well. And I'd also like to add further to this motion that to call for a passport office in this region. I think the people in the west and the north of this country, I think that we, our population that we have here, the demand is here, the population, population is here. It would facilitate easier access for passports throughout the west and the north. When you make an appointment now, if you want an emergency passport and you have to go to Dublin or Cork, you make the appointment, it's a first-come, first-served basis. You have to pay for the passport, you have to pay for the appointment, you have your travel costs. And if you're from this region of the country, you also have a day off work. So I think that right now, as I said, the demand is there. I think we can facilitate this. I think we're central in this county to the north and the rest of the west. I think we could facilitate this. And I think that the world that we live in now, all these industries don't have to be in Dublin and Cork. And I'm asking for your support, for your support to add to this motion as well, that we call for a passport office in this region, that this council calls for that passport office. Constable Gilroy, you second it.
Yes, Cahill, to fully support you and what you're saying there. The main passport office is actually not open to the, was never open to the public. I think it's out in Swords or somewhere like that. With, with good communications, that could be in the Beebran factory in Colloony in three months' time or next year when the, when it closes. Do you know what I mean? It could be anywhere in this region where jobs are badly needed. Gerry Loney was looking for it a long time to go into Tabor Curry, as we all know. It is vitally important. I have to say, the public office in Mount Street should be reopened to the public. I found myself in a situation one time a few years back where my passport got misplaced and I didn't realise I didn't have it until I was at the airport. And I had, that was at eight o'clock in the morning, I had a new passport at half twelve. And it cost me a few quid, but it was my mistake that it had been misplaced. But those are the services that should be provided. And yes, it should be somewhere in the northern and western region, and Sligo is central in that region. And I think that's where it should be. Thank you.
Constable O'Boyle.
Thank you, Chair. And in supporting your motion, it'd be great to see a passport office here in Sligo. I think when we had a presentation last or two or three weeks ago in the municipal meeting, to Sligo are only two point three percent of the national average for jobs, when the average is eleven. So why not bring the passport office here? We've all had queries about people looking for passports or trying to get political pressure put on for them. So it'd definitely be supportive of your motion.
Constable Healy.
Yes, I want to support your motion. And as you says, Gerry Lumby did try to get a passport office down here. But I think what we should do, and you've said it yourself, I think we should look for a meeting with, with our four TDs, a deputation of us, to see, explore this now, when it is there. Because what will happen is, like everything else, Coleragh or somebody else will get it and we won't. So as this is, I think that what you've said here on motion, Chair, I think we need to follow on it. And I would suggest that a deputation of us would meet with our TDs and see, is this possible to get to Sligo? As well as that, it'll serve Leitrim, West Carmagh and the other areas as well, I'm going to go on. So I propose that we should do that. Thank you.
Motion agreed? Okay, agreed. Oh, sorry, Constable Catherley.
Just to support the motion as well, I won't go back on what everyone else has said. Well done and bring it on to the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is now available. I'm not fully clear on what's the criteria for throwing down this funding. And I'm not clear, odd projects will be sent to the department for funding. And also the match funding, which is going to be a big problem, because it was almost twenty-five percent funded from the department, from, from the council. And all of these projects will be fairly, you know, we're talking about probably a million and a half million for any kind of project now for, in, in this area. Could I ask the director, and who the director is, if the match, because some of these could be recreation projects at piers and harbors, could the match funding be, if, if the local promoter was prepared to pay the match funding, would that eliminate the application?
Okay, do you want an answer to that? Tom?
Yeah.
Tom, would you like to come in there? You're on mute, Tom. You're on mute, Tom.
I'm, okay, can you hear me now? Well, I suppose we are currently, we just, in the last couple of weeks, received details of this grant scheme. And I suppose the department is still clarifying exactly what we can apply for. But I suppose we will be looking at all our peers. First of all, it's for publicly owned infrastructure. And matching, as you said, matching funding will have to be provided. But we're looking at all our peers in harbors, including Sligo Port, as possible, as where we can make possible applications for funding. I suppose the applications have to show that we can make, that there is an economic return to the community. And it's focused on fishing communities as such. So we have to make sure that our applications meet those requirements. And we're working to see at the moment as to how much match funding we can provide from existing funding streams that were provided in the budget. I know the chief executive has talked about matching funding earlier. He may need to, he may want to comment as well. But obviously, matching funding is a major issue for us.
Constable.
Side what projects are going to, with elected members, if any, see input into proposing projects. I heard Sligo Harbour, I wish the people of Sligo Harbour have a success. But Constable Clark and myself, we have a lot of harbors out in West Sligo who have got no funding for a long, long time. And we'd like to be considered in our area. And the other question is about the manager funding. And if some of these projects, if the promoter was prepared to pay the match funding, does that eliminate the application?
Well, first, first of all, sorry, just, if I just, can I come back in?
You can come back in, yes, yes.
Yeah, just quick, just very quickly. First of all, we're looking at all piers and harbors as to improvement works that may fit the scheme, so to speak. And we would welcome any suggestions from any of the members if they could, if they want to make it to us informally, we will definitely consider them. I'm not quite sure what you mean by promoters, the promoters making the matching funding. You might want to clarify that in due course, what you mean, who the promoters are and whatever, you know, so. It's understood that the matching funding will come from the council, but maybe if there's outside funding, I'm sure we could consider that.
Constable Clark, we'll let you. I get to see maybe, I get to see you to comment. Do you want to see you to comment first? On your mic.
What may qualify is a recreation of some kind, it'll be a pontoon or something at a pier or harbour. If the promoter who was prepared to help with the, with the, with the matching funding, would that be allowed?
I'm going to let Seehan just answer that question. Constable Clark, you're the second of the motion.
I think it's premature at this moment in time to say which projects, but this is only public infrastructure discovered by this scheme. So what will happen is, match funding will be required for these projects. And as I said, there's a report coming next month in relation to match-funded projects. But the indication is really, and it was said to the CPG on Friday, if we're going to find match funding for projects, and it has to be around items such as coastal erosion and dereliction, they have to take priority areas, but we'll be discussing that with elected members in due course.
Constable Clark, I'm going to let you in when you're thinking, Constable Queen. Because I know you are.
Thanks, Cahill. I, I want to ask Tom a question. Would he be aware of this information, for example, that Pulaini Pier lands the second largest tonnage of fish in the northwest, second only to Killybegs? And there has been no repair work done in that in the recent years. And the fishermen there are looking for a twenty-two foot extension to the pier because they can't land the fish when the tide is out. The need, when it's out, they can't get in as far as the pier. So they need a twenty-two foot extension. And I know that our council engineer over the, has met with the local fishermen there. And do they take all the boxes and will they be considered now for this scheme?
Tom, you can come in on that now.
Sorry, Cahill, yeah, we will, we will take whatever information we have, that information you have, we would gladly accept it. And our piers and harbors seniors like Engineer Val Baines, I'm sure would be aware of that. And definitely, that's the sort of, that's the sort of information we need to support our application in regard to the extent of fishing activities that take place at these ports and how anything that we will do will support that activity. And also ancillary activities that will support the community who might be affected by Brexit as such, the fishing community is affected by Brexit. So it doesn't have to be directly fishing, but it can be schemes around the port. It wouldn't be road schemes approaching the pier, but it won't be repairs on the pier that might support other activities as well that would support the community, the fishing community.
Is that all right, Constable Clark? Okay.
Yeah, I, I'll ask the fishermen to contact Val Baines and maybe set up a meet, another meeting maybe. Thanks, Tom.
Constable Fox. You would indicate it.
Just, just to support the motion, yeah, it's a timely motion as well. And it's good to see money being allocated for the port. You know, North Sligo, there are many piers in North Sligo as well that can, that are, have good, strong fishing industries. Thank you.
Right, Constable Gilroy is probably going to tell us that now as well.
Tom, they're, they're pushing North Sligo that we have no piers, but we'll ring them out on the tour someday and show them. Look, I, I, first thing, this, this, I had something pretty similar to this in, it was preemptive. And I just accepted the report last month, if you look back on it, because it was before it was announced and I thought it was imminent. But it's important, I think some groundwork has been done and I think Val has been working behind the scenes on it. That you asked about the, the matching funding, it's only fifteen percent, if I, if I believe I'm right on that. So the minister, well, as against twenty-five percent on a lot of other projects that we get funding for. I, I suggested to the minister that five would be a far more appropriate figure, five percent. And for all funds, in fact. Now, if we got ten, we'd probably take it with both hands. But look, the fact of the matter is, it is a reduced, reduced fee. It is the Brexit fund and Brexit affects this region more than any other region in the, in the country. And I think for that reason, we, we need to make sure that we fully use it as much as we can. And I do take the chief executive's report to the CPG last week about not being able to take on too many more things. But it is something that we should be taking advantage of because our coast is our, is going to be our money spinner. That's what brings people to this area, be it for, for fishing or for tourism activities on the water. Thank you.
Now, Constable Queen, wrap it up there.
They'll be in the next meeting.
Right, okay. Okay, now thirty-nine, speed it up there. Seconder.
Thanks to the director for his, for his report. Is it, is it twenty-two houses I've seen? My God, twenty houses in the next two years, sorted houses. And we have all the motions gone on Constable Bree and all the other consuls about the price of housing. It's disappointing. It's not the director's fault. Calling the manager and director to do everything they can to. But calling the manager and director to do everything they can to try and get more units available. Under every, under every councillor out there, he gave us a full list of initiatives that this new minister for housing is, was working on. And I would hope that we'll get more than 20 houses or 20 units available to us for our people over the next two years. That's all I'd say, but it's very.
That's only under part five. Joe, that's only under part five.
Oh, yeah. Is it?
That's, that's acquired under part five. So there'll be 20 houses under part five, so that we're still, we're still going to, we're still going to acquire more social housing.
Yeah, basically the part five is for the private developments and we acquire the houses from them for social.
Right, okay, oh, sorry. Yeah.
So that's on that, so look, we'd be looking to deliver on our own social housing delivery as well. And that's roughly 500 over the next five years.
Okay, everyone, just more than one person. Okay, thank you.
Forty, councillor O'Grady.
Thank you, Cahill. Look, I put down this motion that we write to the minister for health, Stephen Donnelly, welcoming the implementation of the out of hospital cardiac arrest strategy for Ireland. And the HSE is currently in the implementation phase of the out of hospital cardiac arrest strategy with regard to the training and deployment of automated external defibrillators that we know as AEDs. This strategy was developed by an interdisciplinary steering group, which has a aim of increasing the number of people who survive an out of hospital cardiac arrest, using national and international best practice to address the elements in the chain of survival for the victim. And the group is led by the National Ambulance Service, the Irish Heart Foundation and the Gardaí Sheadhconna. And at present, the National Ambulance Service has a list of locations of more than 2,000 AEDs on its National Computer Aided Dispatch System. Since the pandemic, not everyone within the voluntary sector has returned to the role of being a first responder. And this is a real issue. And it has left a deficit in the service. So it's hugely important that where there is a deficit, the National Ambulance Service work with local fire brigade and garda to train and equip their vehicles with defibrillators so that there is no gaps throughout our communities, throughout the country. Thank you, Cahill. So I ask that the council will write and acknowledge this tremendous piece of work that will ensure and hopefully increase the survival rate of people who have been out of hospital cardiac arrest. Thank you.
Councillor Boyle.
Thank you, Chair, just to support the motion.
I think we'll all support the motion, we can agree the motion. Okay, 41, councillor Baker, now a second.
I just brought this motion out. As we all know, frontline healthcare workers will receive a once off payment tax free of a thousand euro. I know the government has set up a panel to look at others that may qualify. But one group of people that I believe never got recognition, what it deserves is the home support workers that goes in and cares for older people and people with disabilities in their own home. And I think especially in the first phase of that pandemic, we know how the disease walked through nursing homes and the last of lives. I certainly know that there was a lot of lives saved by people being able to stay in their own environment. And these people that does that work, their dedication and their caring aspect to it is unreal. Because we're growing up in a generation now that you wouldn't, with a lot of these people, the day of getting a doctor out to look at a person is gone. And these people that's going into the homes, they know the routine of a person. And if they see that something isn't just right, that person might have two calls in the day. But they'll call a neighbour and say, check in on Jordan today to see that everything is okay. And that's the reason, I know they can say that you're opening a can of worms. But definitely a last life has been saved. And this group of people never got the recognition that they deserve. And the only time that either bothered me or any other councillor was that where maybe roads was bad going into a person. That's the only time you'd hear them giving a bit of grief. They never once complained. And the work that they do with these people is unreal. And I think that's why they deserve this recognition. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gilroy.
I don't know if I beat you to it or not, but look at it's a very admirable, a very admirable motion, very well timed. These people are as special as anybody else out there in the community. There's a bit of an echo. Just to say that we badly needed them, they came to the call and they should be recognized either in this way or some other way. They're, they didn't have all the PPEs that may have been had in clinical situations. They were out there, they had to eat their lunches in their cars, they had nowhere to go from morning till evening, except into houses with elderly people and people who were infirm in different ways. And it was great, brilliant, the service they provided. I seen them on my own road, I seen them on other roads in the locality. They're hugely, hugely important people. And it's only, it'll only be a small response to acknowledge their work.
Councillor Millanick.
Yeah, I just want to acknowledge that this is an excellent motion from councillor Baker. The people that we're talking about here is, they're excellent people, they work very hard. They're always trying to put an hour's work into a half an hour. They're totally dedicated and enable people, as we said earlier on another motion, to live in their own homes. Now, I think the big danger in all of this is that if those people aren't looked after with the thousand euros tax free payment, they'll feel disenfranchised, they'll feel that they were left out, they'll feel that their work wasn't valued and rewarded the same as others. So I think it's very important that the government take another look at this very well meaning initiative and try to include the people that look after people in their own homes in it. Thank you.
Councillor O'Boyle.
Thank you, Chair, just to support the motion, not only were they doing excellent work, but they're also social, they're for people at home alone. Thank you.
Councillor O'Grady.
Thank you, Cahill. Look, I had a motion down last month about the clinical frontline workers, that the government would pay them their money. And they now have acknowledged that they're going to, so there's a timeline on when they're going to pay them. Very tardy indeed they were. Wales and England and Scotland had paid their people, but it was dragged out to the end. I do fully agree that the home support workers should get acknowledgement and payment. A homeworker or home help is worth their weight in gold if you get a good worker. Absolutely worth their weight in gold. So I think it would be very fitting that they would be acknowledged and not left out or that what they have done is not regarded. So I think it's a very timely motion and I wholeheartedly support it.
Councillor Gibbons.
Cahill, look, I want to support the motion. It's, I've seen it firsthand when the pandemic first hit. I seen that the restrictions that was taken even in the hospitals and care, or in the care homes and whatever else. But I've seen that these service providers that was out there, they just carried on with it, they got on with it. And that was the reality to it. And they were on the road and somebody even says they're about to meet in their lunch on the, or from their cars as they moved out between different clients as it was happening. Because realistically, because of COVID, there was so much restrictions that was in it, that the main offices that was overseeing the work that the carers was doing themselves wasn't available. They couldn't go back to them offices, everything had to be done off the phone. And those people without, unselfishly, and they went into homes to carry out the services to those that needed, those that was less or most vulnerablest in our society. And they carried out that without complaint or anything else. And then on top of that, they had the worry of going home to their own families. And in a lot of cases, the young children or maybe somebody belongs to them that was sick, they had to, maybe if it was a thing that there was an elderly person living with them, they were the chances that they took, but they made sure that their services were there. And I seen it with one of the organisations that I'm involved in, that I'm on the board of management, that ran so smoothly, them people unselfishly gave their time to those that needed. That's what they signed up for and that's exactly what they did in relation to it. But it went unseen by the general public. And I think myself in relation, those people need to be commended and those people should be rewarded. And it is a very timely motion and it is a motion, I'm very proud of the support. And I think myself that it's a brilliant motion and those people need to be recognized. Maybe there is other people out there as well that does need it, but we can look at that further. This motion is specifically for that and I want to support it 100%.
Councillor Mulvey.
Yeah, thanks, Cahill. Look, and I agree with the sentiments of my colleagues on this. I had a similar call in December, you know, calling on the finance minister, Pascal Donough, to provide assistance to caregivers because these group of people who worked right through the pandemic, you know, they provide an invaluable service which actually saves the HSE money. And perhaps more importantly, the social skills that they bring to the elderly people who live alone, they're a vital lifeline. And you know, one of the aspects I pointed out in December was simply on petrol alone. You know, if they're putting 50 euro a week in their car, it's gone up over 13 euro in the last year. So the rise in fuel costs, and that's only one issue alone, there's an awful lot of other household bills that have increased. So I certainly support and compliment councillor Baker on this, on this motion.
Councillor Castingley.
And thank you, Chair, and I'd like to support the motion as well. I know that home care workers, they're like a family member to the people that they're looking after. And these care workers worry about the people in their care the same as if they were their own family. And I know that they're very, very dedicated. There was a lot of confusion about who exactly, especially when it was announced at the start about the thousand euro that was rightly given to frontline workers. But just to clarify that, if a home care worker is registered with the HSE and particularly if they were in the first round, or the first cohort of vaccinations before the official vaccination, the rounds were set up, they are actually entitled to that thousand euro. So just to clarify that, I know there was, there's a lot of confusion out there, but definitely if they're registered with the HSE and they were the first cohort of workers, frontline workers getting the vaccination, then they are entitled to that thousand euro. Thank you.
I'd also like to support the motion. I think it's a, it's a good motion as well. And as we can see, that has been supported in, around the chamber. And I think these home support workers are invaluable in our communities, throughout our towns and villages, the people who are being cared for, they look forward to the home support worker calling for help or company. I know houses where these workers have, have, have kept people, people alive in the work that they do. I think it's, it's a good motion and I'm delighted to support it as well. Councillor Baker, yeah, councillor Baker, do you want to come in and finish up?
Just to finish, I'd like to thank you all for the support. And I think in a lot of cases, these people are the eyes and the ears for these vulnerable people. And I think from this council, if a pound was never to come out of it, that every community within really appreciates the work that they do. And it's, you know, caring and giving. And from everyone here, that's irrespective and hopefully they will follow through with it more.
Thanks councillor Baker. Forty two, councillor Gibbons. Taking the council.
Cahill, look, it's requesting that this county council write to the Finfafo minister for health, Stephen Donnelly, to confirm definite completion date for the National Children's Hospital. Now, as you know, this fiasco has came, has been going on for years. It's 1.7 billion is exactly what the cost of it is at the moment. There is other legal shambles going on out there as it is, but still, at the end of the day, we have over 90,000 children depending on that hospital and on it to be finished in order to be conditions that need to be dealt with by specialists, who was actually waiting on this hospital for them to get rid of their backlog. A lot of these children are suffering with spinal bifida and scoliosis of the spine and different conditions like this. So what I am calling on is the minister Donnelly gives a definite date that people can actually know that their children that are suffering out there will at some stage, past that date, will be seen and taken care of within that hospital instead of the first that's going on at the moment. The blueprint that was used to build this hospital is a blueprint that we should never be used again. Because it's a blueprint that has been wrong from day one. And I think myself that it needs to be dealt with. And what I would ask in relation to it is that minister Donnelly will give a definite date of when this is to be complete. So I'd ask this county council to write to him. So I'd ask you all to support the motion, thanks very much.
Councillor Bree, you second the motion?
Second the motion.
Okay, that motion agreed? Agreed. Okay, councillor Gilroy.
Thank you, and thanks Jim for the reply. Maybe not just as detailed as I was hoping for, but I won't, I won't cry over that. Look, the reason this came up was I responded to a survey that was done by the Department of Housing on two, I think it was sent out to all councillors and to all councils about about how municipal districts were dealt with. I suppose I had asked the question as to how many of the 45 have been. And I didn't get that in the answer as to how many of them have been, so you might forward that to the members. It's, it's important that if we're ever to move away from having everything to discuss here, we need to get to the stage of devolving powers to the municipal districts. And that's all I'm looking for in this. But they did say for, there was a workshop held on it at the end of January. Just to go through what was discussed, we were asked what reserve functions, if any, have been delegated to municipal district level since 2014 in your local authority? In your opinion, are there any reasons that some particular functions have been devolved to, have been devolved to municipal, but some others have not? What do you believe are the reasons or the barriers? Would you like to see more reserve functions? All those sorts of questions. So it was a very useful workshop, I have to say, and it gave a bit of background. But it's vitally important that we start doing this. It's, it came in in 2014, it's time for us now to start lining up with the areas. And I think our area particularly suffers because it wasn't set up as an area until 2019. So thank you very much.
Yeah, I'd like to support that motion as well. Is that agreed? Yes. Forty four, votes of sympathy, councillor Bree.
I wish to propose a vote of sympathy to the family of Donald O'Shea who passed away on the 20th of January. Donald O'Shea was the chief executive officer of the Northwestern Health Board from 1974 until 1997, when he took up the position of CEO of the Eastern Regional Health Authority. He also served as chairman of the Hilt Education Bureau and he was a respected member of the board of Cordena Ospitale. During his 23 years of dedicated service as CEO of the Northwestern Health Board, he successfully developed the health services throughout the region. His passion for his work and his sense of service to the public was recognized by all who had the privilege of working with him. And I propose that we extend our sympathy to his wife Barbara, to his sons and daughters, his brothers and sister and to his extended family and friends, I formally propose.
I'd like to second that.
Thanks councillor Bree. And I'd, I'd like to extend this council sympathy as well to former member of staff, Martin Ryan, who passed away. And he was a member of the Crown More Regeneration Office. He was a school warden and he was a fire attendant in County Hall. Always obliging, good natured and friendly word for everyone and myself and Zee attended the funeral. And I think that that came across with the family at the funeral as well. So I'd like to extend this council sympathy to the family. Zee, you want to have a word there as well?
Just to like to be associated with the sympathies there. Obviously a great loss to his family, but if you'd seen his colleagues as well from the Crown More Regeneration Project, a great loss to his colleagues as well. So we'd like to be associated with those. Thank you, Cahill.
And just I had found out in recent weeks, he actually, he lived on my little lane where I live in Strajia. I didn't realise he had, he had lived there. So he was, he was a Grangeman first, that's where he started school.
Forty five votes, congratulations.
With your permission, Cahill, look, could I, I had a vote of congratulations wrote out. And it was that this council would convey a vote of congratulations and best wishes to Charlie Bird and Vicky Phelan as they engage on their epic challenge to climb Croat Patrick on April the 2nd. And in doing so, raise vital money to assist in the provision of care for so many of our citizens who are facing trying
of care for so many of our citizens who are facing trying times and conditions. In doing so, they are displaying an amazing degree of concern and empathy for others. And the way as a council encourages as many people as possible to engage with many of the local events taking place on that day, to lend moral support and if possible, donate whatever they can to two great causes, be it a house and the Irish Motor New Run Association of Ireland. The courage and concern shown by these two people is commendable and must be acknowledged and applauded, and this is second by Constable Joe Queen.
Agreed, that's agreed. We would all agree that. Constable Queen, and you want to?
Congratulations to Helen Rochford-Brennan. She'd be a good supporter of the South Sligo, a great community advocate. And as you know, Helen Rochford-Brennan was diagnosed with dementia approximately eight or nine years ago, and her performance on the Tommy Tiernan Show, doing so much to highlight Alzheimer's, and there are over 64,000 Alzheimer's sufferers in this country, they reckon over the next 20 years that will rise to 150,000. And we have a support group out here in Scroon, and it's quite clear that the government are not, not allocating enough funding to the carers and the Alzheimer's Association. It's a heartbreaking disease to get, and you're going to go to the nursing homes and you'll see the tragedy. But I want to congratulate Helen Rochford, she's a woman of great courage, she's travelled all over Europe to highlight the dementia cause. And well done to Tommy Tiernan, he handled that, that interview very well. Thank you.
Thanks, you, Constable Queen, and we all agree with that too. Constable Fox.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Just like to take the opportunity to congratulate Ethne Clancy, who was the manager of the Sligo Regional Complex there, she on her retirement, and to wish her all the very best in her retirement. Helen had a tremendous contribution to the success of the sports complex, and I'd like to make sure that she's, her, her efforts and her all of her hard work is acknowledged by the council. Thank you.
Thanks, Constable Fox. Constable Castorley.
And thank you. I'd like to propose a vote of congratulations to Leona McGuire, a first Irish golfer to win the LPGA Drive On Championship, and just, she's just such a fantastic role model for, for women and for girls, and for all young players. And I just think it's important, and I suppose, just, just to show our, and I suppose with our, our history of golf in the county as well, and she has visited Sligo on many of the occasions, so just to pass on our huge congratulations and pride in, in her achievements. Thank you.
Okay, conferences and training? Yeah, forty-seven, to note summary procedures and conferences attended in accordance with clause, correspondence, notices, any matters arising from the minutes? Any, any other business?
Cahill, look, could I just ask one question with your permission, and it's just something I know you've spoken as well, and I think Constable Baker. Going back there last September, I had a motion in calling on for an update or an upgrade of Road L1502, which is the Drumfin to Valley Moorth Road. And it's just if there was ever any update on that, I had called that it be upgraded, but also if there could be a traffic counter placed on that road, because I know since it has opened, and we all welcome the dual carriageway, there has been a huge increase of traffic on the road, and I've been contacted by residents and even the school on the road, that, you know, there's, there's a huge volume of traffic. And if a traffic counter could be placed on the near Valley Moorth, it might help.
Could we look for a motion for that for the next municipal district meeting as well?
Right, yeah.
Do, please.
Thanks.
Okay. Well done, everyone. Thanks.